Good evening. I'd like to call the Sherwood City Council, May 21, 2013, City Council Meeting. And I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'll all join me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Sylvia, roll call, please.
Mayor Middleton is absent. Council President Henderson?
Here.
Counselor Grant?
Here.
Counselor Folsom?
Here.
Counselor Butterfield?
Here.
Counselor Langer?
Here.
Counselor Clark?
Here.
Thank you.
Sorry. My first time. I already made a mistake. Consent. I have two items on the consent agenda.
I'll move it. Second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Presentation. Do we have a member from EMS here for EMS Week? Okay. I have in front of me an EMS Week proclamation. The week of May 19 through the 25th is Emergency Medical Services Week. This is signed by the mayor. Whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services Team are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the Emergency Medical Services Team consists of emergency physicians, nurses, medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, and administrators, and others, and whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services Teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of Emergency Medical Service Providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, aye, says Bill Middleton. Linda Henderson, President of the Sherwood City Council of Oregon, recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19 through the 20th, 2013, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Within this theme, "One Mission, One Team," I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. I saw somebody from TVFNR is here. I don't know if they're still here, if they want to be acknowledged. Obviously, they serve our-
They're waving back there.
They're waving in the back.
Come on up.
If they want to be recognized, those are members of Twelton Valley Fire District, who we have a wonderful relationship with. And we want to thank you for their service and thank them for coming tonight. Okay. Next, we have New Business Ordinance 2013-002, declaring certain sidewalks in the city to be defective under Sherwood Municipal Code, Chapter 12.02, for Areas 1 and 2 Phase 3. Craig Sheldon, our Public Works Director.
Good evening. This is back to the Sidewalk Assistance Program. Again, we identified 1,700 issues throughout the city of sidewalks, which in our code states that the property owner is responsible for the sidewalk repairs. If you join in to these 211 addresses, if you join in, it's a 50/50 split with the city. And your sidewalk pays for that on your utility bill, as well as the 50% that you're paying back into the coffers to have that repaired using a city contractor.
Okay. I have a couple of questions, but any questions for Craig, for staff? Counselor Folsom?
Just so we're clear, the issues that you're talking about are raised from tree roots, or something like that, where they need to be shaved, or a portion needs to be replaced. Is that correct?
Yes.
And about how much is the average cost of a repair from a small shave, which we've seen all over town happening, to a larger repair, which is a section of the cement needing to be replaced?
So, as if you were the property owner on a shave, your cost for the shave, if one single shave would be $22.
And that's the 50/50 split. That's when you're sharing it.
As far as the repair, that kind of depends on how damaged your property is. And it's got to be under the 25% of your property to qualify for the assistance program. So we've seen anything up to, you know, $1,000 and below, depending if there's a tree issue, the tree has to be removed. And you can have actually 12 months to pay that back, so.
So the city is working with property owners in not only paying for half of the thing, because it comes back through the utility bill fee, like you said, but also in allowing them to make payments so that they can get the project done in a timely manner and be safe, but still have that 12 months?
That's correct.
Could you all talk louder, so we can hear it back here, if you can get closer to your microphone?
Sure. Anybody else on council have a question? I just have one question. Craig, you talked about Area 1?
Yes.
And Area 2. How many areas are there?
So we broke the city up in four areas.
Four areas, okay.
We're still in Area 1, Area 2. We're starting out. This is the Phase 3 of the project, so.
So these are all these streets we see here?
Yeah. Those are every address that we have issues that's been identified. And then you'll see the next round come back to council. But 211 will probably take us, by the time you notify everybody, 30-day notice. Everything that goes on to get to the actual repairs, you probably won't see the bills going out until later in the fall, because we won't start this until probably in middle of July.
Would counsel like to entertain anybody from the public who might want to comment on this program or ordinance? Anybody who would like to comment on the sidewalk ordinance? Okay, sure.
Can I just ask a quick question?
At the microphone.
If you could just come up, please, then everybody will be able to hear you. And if you could just state your name and address, please.
Sure.
And then if you could fill out one of these.
I have filled out one, but it wasn't on this subject, but I will fill one out.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Nancy Taylor, 17036 Southwest Lindley, LYNNLYWAY, Sherwood, Oregon, 97140. The tree removal? Will that be debated? Will, if a tree is in the middle of two property lines, will both people be responsible for it?
When it actually gets to, if your address is on this list, I don't think-
My, the person next to me is, that's why I'm asking.
It will be, it could be split. People have done that. Two property owners have split it. There's a process for a tree removal and everything, too, that's got to go on, so.
How would we know if it's tree removal? You know, I've seen SS on there. I've seen different things as I walk around.
So you'll receive a letter in the mail, and then we actually have a person come out and meet with you to identify the issue, to show the property owner what's going on, what needs to be done. You have the choices, but it has to qualify in the program.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Anybody else would like to comment on the sidewalk ordinance? Come up to the desk, please.
My name is Barbara Nordstrom. I live on Lindley Way. And I have a sidewalk that has been impacted by my neighbor's tree. But it's impacting my sidewalk. So how does that work?
So the area, the city was broken up into four areas. So I don't know exactly if your address is on this tonight.
It is.
It is.
It's an R&amp;R.
It's an R&amp;R. So when you get your letter, there'll be a city representative that comes out and meets with you if you sign up for the program. And actually, you fill the paperwork out and turn it in to us. And they'll go through the whole process, who's responsible. If it's your neighbor's, that's who they'll deal with, is your neighbor. And if it's not yours.
Okay. Well, if I have to pay to have it repaired myself, I don't want the tree removed. If, is that possible?
So we try not to remove trees unless we have to remove trees. But a lot of times, there's some ways that we can go around without moving the trees. But a lot of times, what was planted back in the day that this stuff was all built, they're not suitable for that area.
Okay. Well, didn't the city plant the trees in the first place?
It was part of the development that went in.
Well, okay. Just so I know.
Okay. Would you just like to clarify why we're passing an ordinance to take care of this type of service? It's a partnership between the city and owners. Maybe you can just clarify why it's an ordinance.
And we already passed, you know, the process of doing this, so why are we coming back?
Right.
So we have an ordinance that spells out that the property owner is responsible for the trees, the sidewalks, to maintain them. In that ordinance also says that we have to come in front of you for approval of an ordinance. And we can do that through New Business. We don't have to take it through a public hearing process. So really, and it ties into the sidewalk program, assistance program that was adopted in 2011 to help the property owner, so they don't have to burden the whole cost.
All right. Any other questions from council or a motion?
I move that we adopt Resolution 2013-023.
Isn't that 002? Sorry. Yeah. Why don't you withdraw your motion?
Oh, I withdrawn the motion, and-
There we go.
Yep, sorry. And move that we adopt Ordinance 2013-002.
Second.
So counsel, read caption and adopt. Counsel will consider adoption of Ordinance 2013-002, declaring certain sidewalks in the city of Sherwood to be defective under Sherwood Municipal Code, Chapter 12.08, for Areas 1 and 2 Phase 3. Counselor Clark?
Aye.
Counselor Langer?
Aye.
Counselor Butterfield?
Aye.
Counselor Folsom?
Aye.
Counselor, Counsel President Henderson?
Aye.
And Counselor Grant? And Mayor Middleton is absent. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Craig. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing, an ordinance to amend Section 16.12 of the Zoning and Community Development Code relating to property-zoned, very-low-density residential, which we also call VLDR.
Counsel President, prior to starting, I do need to read a public hearing statement.
Right, sorry.
That's all right. The Sherwood City Council will hear testimony this evening for Ordinance 2013-003, an ordinance to amend Section 16.12 of the Zoning and Community Development Code relating to property-zoned, very-low-density residential. The purpose of the hearing this evening is to provide the public with an opportunity to testify on the above said item. The order of business the council will follow is to hear the staff report, receive correspondence, receive testimony from the applicant, receive other public testimony, receive additional staff comments and questions from the council will follow. The hearing will then be closed and no further testimony will be received. Discussion by the council will follow. Any interested person may present testimony. If you wish to speak, please fill out the testimony form and submit it to the city recorder. The council president will recognize those persons wishing to speak, and all questions should be addressed through the council president. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record as this hearing will be recorded. Please limit your testimony to four minutes. This is a legislative hearing. However, because of the issue arises from an application, we will allow the applicant 15 minutes to describe the proposal. The applicant may reserve some of that time for rebuttal if she wishes. All other testimony will be limited to four minutes per person.
Staff report. Hi, Michelle.
Thank you. Good evening, counsel. My name's Michelle Miller. I'm from the Planning Department. I'm bringing forward tonight the Planning Commission recommendation for a text amendment that applies to all the property-zoned, very-low-density residential. A text amendment is a Type 5 legislative action that, if approved by council, makes changes to the Sherwood Zoning and Development Code. An application was made by a property owner of the very-low-density land to make changes to the very-low-density residential zone if developed as a planned unit development. Staff has mailed out notice to all the property owners with property-zoned, very-low-density residential, or VLDR approximately three times, letting them know about the public hearings that will be, that are being held. Also, the Planning Commission held three hearings, also taking in testimony, that some of which you have before you this evening. And to also back up a bit, the council is somewhat familiar with this area, as this is the same applicant that came forward with a planned unit development last year. But this text amendment applies to all of the property-zoned, very-low-density residential. There we go. Is that not working?
I'll do it if you need.
Okay. So could you please change the slide? Yes.
Can you hear in the back? Yeah, okay.
Great. So here is a picture of our zoning and plan map. The property-zoned, the property that we're talking about this evening is zoned that mint-green color. It is in between the Fair Oaks subdivision to the north and the Sherwood View Estates to the south. And it's all of the property primarily east of southwest Murdoch Road. Next slide, please. Here's an aerial look of the area zoned, very-low-density residential. It's known as the Tonkin Scablands, a rocky terrain that's been sculpted from glacial flooding. There's a wetland area located in the southeast portion of the site. And the red line shows the, both the UGB boundary and also the city's limits boundary as well. The VLDR land is categorized as providing for low-density, larger, single-family housing in a natural resource and environmentally sensitive areas, warranting preservation, but suitable for limited development. Aside from the Fair Oaks and Sherwood View Estates, there are several parcels that have been developed using the standardized zoning rather than a planned unit development. But there's effectively about five parcels with about 36 acres that remain underdeveloped, and the proposed text amendment could potentially utilize those standards. Next slide, please. Because of some of the challenges to developing this area, in 2006, council approved a grant resolution for a TGM grant that the city received to develop a master plan area, for, a master plan for the area known as the Southeast Sherwood Master Plan, which you will find also in your materials, I believe, as Exhibit D. Participation by the property owners was really great. About 120 members participated in this process. But there was never any finalization to this plan. The Planning Commission adopted a resolution supporting the ideas of the plan, but the city council never passed an ordinance in support of, in support of the master plan. Next slide, please. So talking a little bit about residential land use zoning in the city, we have approximately, we have five zones from very-low-density, which is what we're talking about tonight, which the standard zone, minimum lot size is 40,000 square feet, and it ranges to our high-density residential zone of 5,000 square feet for minimum lot size. So, and also, we're going to be talking a little bit about density, which very-low-density in this zone is .7 to 1 unit per acre maximum, all the way to high-density residential, up to 24 units per acre. Next slide, please. So here's aerial on how that looks when it's built out. You can see the property to the west of Murdoch Road is, lot sizes between 7,000 and 9,000 square feet. And to the right is Sherwood View Estates, which is 10 to, up to 19,000 square feet lots, with an average size of about 12,000 square feet. Next slide, please. And we're going to be talking a little bit about planned unit developments. These are designed to allow some flexibility in development code standards. With a trade-off, it must result in a greater public benefit than the standard zoning would allow. You also need to dedicate, a developer would need to dedicate 15% of the area for open space. And it's reviewed by the Planning Commission with a recommendation and adopted via ordinance by the city council. So it allows some flexibility and unique site design, and also promotes efficient uses of land and resources. So those general standards would be applied if the text amendment were adopted as well. Next slide, please. So currently, very-low-density has a standard zoning, which is up to 1 unit per acre and a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet. One of the things unique about the very-low-density residential zone is that it allows a special density allowance for, if developed as a PUD with a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet and a density of 2 units per acre. And all the other regular planned unit development standards apply. And so what the Planning Commission considered for their recommendation is to add another alternative called the Southeast Sherwood Master Planned Unit Development. Next slide, please. And those standards are that a Southeast Sherwood Master Plan PUD allows the 4 units per acre. This minimum lot size remains the same. And you also have elements or factors from the Southeast Sherwood Master Plan incorporated into the evaluation of the planned unit development. Next slide, please. And those are identified to include buffering of, from the existing development, the requirement for open space, consideration of the environmental opportunities and constraints identified in the plan, identifying the view corridors, and consideration of the housing design type based on compatibility with the surrounding neighborhoods. Next slide. And so what you have before you this evening is the executive summary, the proposed ordinance, proposed language, exhibits through Q. And since you received your packets in the mail, several exhibits have come in and citizen comments via email that you should have received three additional comments during the course of the past week from Sylvia.
And actually, council members, you did receive some of them electronically. Those are the items that were received in advance this evening. We have additional items that were just handed in, and I'm going to pass them out to you now.
So at this time, I'll take any questions that you might have and ask that you hold a public hearing and take testimony at this time. Oh, okay, thanks. Did you want to take questions?
Oh, yeah. Does the council have questions for Michelle or staff right now? Yeah, we're just, of course, getting these, so. Here's more.
That is so disgusting.
Chris, Mr. Cream. So just to clarify, the applicant will go first, and they will have 15, 15 total minutes.
That's correct.
So they'll have an opportunity to address the council. Then we'll take public testimony. We have, I think I said, I have five applicant, or five members of the public signed up. And then the applicant will get the remainder of his 15, if he doesn't use it.
That's correct. She gets 15 minutes total. She can reserve five minutes of that, or some portion of that, for rebuttal if she wishes.
I get this. Okay. So any questions for staff? If not, I'll invite the applicant up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. While we look at-
And counsel and Ms. Applicant, I am going to do five-minute intervals on the clock, so just so there's no confusion.
Do you swear in? You don't swear in here.
No.
Okay, cool. You trust me? That's awesome. Thank you. My name is Kirsten Van Leeu. Oh, I got to think for a second which address I'm using. 30495 Southwest Buckhaven Road, Hillsboro, Oregon, 97123 is my personal mailing address. A year ago, I was in front of you, actually a little over a year ago, making a presentation for a planned unit development. And I think that some of your faces are familiar. You heard me testify at length about that project. And I hope those of you that were here a year ago remember that as much as counsel wanted to support the PUD as it was designed, our city attorney made it very clear that the Southeast Sherwood Master Plan was a summary proceedings document that had been endorsed by the Planning Commission, but had never been carried through to fruition, thus had no legal standing. And because it had no legal standing, we could not use any of the sections or portions of that Southeast Sherwood Master Plan as a legal document to do a PUD in this area. Subsequent to that time, the mayor, the former mayor, asked me straight out, "Why didn't you come and do a text amendment first? Why didn't you come and change the zoning code first? And then we could have supported your project." So we applied for a text amendment. And it's been a long and arduous process. We started last fall, and we have been working through this. I've been working with staff for months to get the right language, which was the original submitted language that you have in your packets. And we've been through three hearings. We've been through several neighborhood meetings. We're now here in front of you, and I will be very honest with you, members of the council. The document that came from the Planning Commission doesn't bear any resemblance to the text amendment that I submitted, that I requested. There are probably a lot of reasons why it doesn't bear any resemblance to what the original submittal was. I have my opinions about how that happened, but I will tell you straight out that the document that was forwarded to you from the Planning Commission bears as much resemblance to a horse as the, no, it bears as much resemblance to a horse as a camel does to a horse. I guess that's the best way to put it. I submitted what I thought was a very, very simple, very clean text amendment to address some very specific concerns. Three issues. The minimum PUD size in the city of Sherwood is 5 acres. There are several parcels of VLDR land that are less than 5 acres. They cannot be developed under any PUD process, because they're less than 5 acres. They can't, they can't be developed. My first request was that we drop the PUD size in the VLDR district to 3 acres, so that it would address all of the vacant parcels. The second thing that I asked for originally was a lot size of 8,000 square feet. And through the public testimony and the Planning Commission, I bumped that number up to 8,500 square feet. The reason that we asked for a minimum lot size of 8,500 square feet is because the methodology that the city of Sherwood uses for calculating density takes a gross site. It takes all of the public right-of-way out of that gross site. And then from what is left, one has to subtract any and all water quality facilities which are required to manage the storm water that comes off of your public right-of-way, and 15% open space. There is absolutely no mathematical way that one can plat 10,000-square-foot lots out of 43,000-square-foot lots, which makes an acre, and come up with 4 units per acre. It is a mathematical impossibility. The best that we can hit, in a perfect world, absolutely square, square site, every number is perfect, the highest we can hit with 10,000-square-foot lots is 3.6 units per acre. The best that we can do to hit 4 units per acre is a 9,000-square-foot lot. Now, what I have, and I'd like to pass out for you after my initial testimony, is a drawing that shows you what 9,000 square feet can do. A 9,000-square-foot lot will give you a net density of exactly 4 units per acre. The problem is that there's not one piece of land, a VLDR land less, that is perfect. It's not square. It's not flat. It's not rectangular. It isn't laid out with numbers that allow you to plat perfect lots, which is why we asked for 8,500-square-foot lot minimum, still understanding that we have a maximum of 4 units per acre. So what happens is if you did have a perfect piece of land, and all the numbers worked perfectly mathematically, you'd still only have 4 units per net acre, which ends up to be just a little over 3 units per gross acre if there's extra land that isn't platted into lots, and every lot is 8,500 square feet. What you end up with is extra open space. I do have a graphic that I will pass out to you that you can look at between my initial testimony and my rebuttal, so you can ask me questions about that. The reason that we did a Southeast Sherwood Master Plan is there was a realization that developing land at 1 unit per acre does not, thank you, sir, does not allow for the cost of putting in- cost of putting in infrastructure to urban standards. When you develop at one unit per acre, as was done in 2004 on Ironwood Estates, excuse me, Ironwood Homes, uh, Ironwood Acres, excuse me, the hearings officer made it clear that an alternative to the city's local street standard is appropriate. And if you'll remember, I testified a year ago telling you that the reason that that was done is because we can't make findings when we're developing land at one unit per acre to mandate urban streets and urban infrastructure. By developing property at four units net per acre, which allows about forty lots on a 10-acre site, it allows about sixty lots on a 12-acre, excuse me, forty lots on a 12-acre site, about thirty lots on a 10-acre site, it facilitates the potential development of this land, which has been sitting fallow all these many years. The third issue that I want to talk about relative to the Planning Commission's submittal vis-à-vis the original submittal is the application of a number of additional subjective review criteria out of the Southeast Sherwood Master Plan. As I said earlier, and as your city attorney told you a year ago, and he will tell you today, that document does not have any legal bearing. It is a summary of the proceedings from seven years ago. If any of you took the time to listen to the Planning Commission or read the minutes from their Planning Commission hearings, what we heard over and over again is that was an effort, it was not a consensus, it was a compromise, that it is out of date, that there was a lot of discontent because there were people that were widely diversion in their views, and they could never reach consensus, and frankly, at the end of the process, they ran out of time and ran out of money, and the summary proceedings that was, that was produced and the Planning Commission reviewed was a wrap-up proceeding. I think it is most inappropriate to apply design criteria and, yeah, excuse me, design criteria for a PUD that are extracted from a document that was never ratified by city council. If that document was only a summary proceeding, or proceeding summary, if it was never taken forward to city council, that means it was not reviewed in the public, in the public eye the way it should have been, and I think it is inappropriate to apply segments of that document as approval criteria on a PUD. The current PUD standards that you have are more than adequate to review all of the items that have been mentioned, and there's no need to add more words to the code. I'm reserving my last five minutes and 34 seconds. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Counsel, any questions of the applicant right now? Okay. Okay.
I, I, I am here with one neighbor who is losing her voice, so she may ask me to come and read her testimony for her. She's having a hard time.
Did she fill out a form?
Yes, she did.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So I have five forms filled out just for this purpose, and the first person listed is Kurt Christensen.
I can't get to the forms about disturbing everybody. You guys need to ask, and I'll fill out the form in a little bit. I can't get to the forms about disturbing the whole thing. Can you get, can you, when we are done, I'll fill out the form.
Sure, sure, sure. Are there still forms in the back?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you. I was gonna say, maybe you could pass them up. So, hi Kurt.
Hello, Mrs. Anderson. How are you?
Welcome.
My name is Kurt Christensen. I'm an old middle school teacher from Fair Oaks Court. I live at 22520 Southwest Fair Oaks, uh, which is immediately south of the area that's proposed. I've been involved since 2004 in finding a equitable way of dealing with some precious nature on the east flank of Sherwood. I have submitted to you the original Planning Commission resolution. It's good to jog the memory because the PR people, they have a way of interjecting and changing language in nuances where the truth becomes almost looking like lies. I can tell you, I have nothing to gain by saying this. There were two or 300 people that worked for hours and days and months and years to come up with the best-intentioned neighborhood development for a very difficult piece of property over there. The area is Sherwood's east flank. It is a solid rock. It took me four days to put in my mailbox. It took me two weeks to put in a dribble line for my wife's flower bed two years ago. The last house that was just built in Sherwood Fair Oaks Court, they could not get the water line in the ground. The city approved the water line stuck through a plastic pipe, and it was barely in the ground 10 inches, and I have good photos of that. So wrapping up some of the comments in addition to what I've submitted to you, this area is under current review by the DEQ, and they have just announced that according to the new EPA standards, that they have to go out and test again because the hexavalan fluoride dangers are even more significant than was initially indicated. We thought honestly that when we completed in good faith the Planning Commission document, that the resolution would be transmitted to the city council, that the city council would act on it. We were assuming naively that we could trust the people in the city council government that we were dealing with. Over the next several years, we were assured several times that it was being taken care of, that everything was all right, and it wasn't until a couple of years ago, when the current application surfaced, that we found out that it had simply been buried. There's no point in pointing fingers at undue conduct by anybody that was involved on the city side, but I personally cannot come away with a good trust in my government, my city government, with the way this was handled. The applicant refers to that this resolution has no bearing. This may be so because of the way the city government has handled it, but I can assure you that from those of us who were involved with, with this process, that we trusted and believed that we had done the right thing and had done all the requisite things. So, uh, when you look at this application in view of the DEQ's current, current testing schedule, I've made some recommendations to you. One of them is, do not approve this application. The applicant already has adequate size of numbers to do something. Wait for the DEQ to rule on this issue, and consider setting up a committee to study the entire east flank of Sherwood. I believe that was my bell. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Next is Dolores Mosher.
Do you want me to read this?
Yes, you can. I'm sorry, I'm Dolores Mosher. I live at 6424 Southwest Washington Court in Lake Oswego, 97035. Kirsten is going to read what I've written.
Sure. Thank you for coming.
And have some information to give you.
Dolores, Dolores took the time to take a petition out to her neighbors, and she has a petition that's been signed by, I think, 12 to 15 people who live up in Fair Oaks subdivision. The letter very briefly said that we are asking for 8,500-square-foot lots. Without the 8,500-square-foot lot, we cannot put four homes per acre. Per my conversations with some of you, you agreed that you assumed the property would be developed someday, and you did not mind building of nice homes. And then there's some more information. So these petitions, these are copies of this petition, and the original is on the top. This is, this is D's statement. We bought our property in 1964. It was zoned R20, which is Washington County zoning between 1964 and 1987. In 1987, Washington County applied new zoning to the property, which was R6, which permitted six residential units per acre. In 1987, the city requested that the Moschers consent to annex into the city with equal zoning from the county. And they have a letter, the Moschers have a letter from Jim Rapp saying that they would have a minimum 5,000-square-foot lot area. With the representation of that nature, the Moschers agreed to be annexed. In 1991, the city downzoned the property from six units to acre to one unit per acre without any notice. In 2005, the city began holding meetings and hearings about the master plan, which is the Southeast Sherwood Master Plan, and that was the first time that the Moschers had learned that their property had been downzoned for, at that point, almost 10, 12 years. After the time of Mrs. Mosher's husband's death, she had the property evaluated or appraised, and it was worth $4.8 million. Because of the downzoning, the property is now worth 1.6, so there's been a significant loss in value because of the loss of potential density. She would like, I am willing to have four units per acre, providing we could have 8,500 square-foot lots so that the land could be developed at four units per net acre. Did you want to add anything more to that? You still have one and a half minutes.
No, I just want to thank you all for taking the time to listen to her this evening. This has been a long process, and at this point, I would like to have a contingency because I believe that I can get a lot more signatures in favor of the zoning of four units per acre at 8,500 square feet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to give them that paper?
Thank you.
Oh, they already got it. Never mind.
They got the petition.
Okay, thank you.
Jean Simpson, 22466 Southwest Nottingham Court, Sherwood, Oregon. I do not have property in this area, but I was, have invested a lot of time through the Southeast Sherwood Master Plan process in the hope of creating something that would benefit the community in a whole. In general, I think the idea before you of increasing density by relying on a seven-year-old plan is a bad practice, especially with the drastic change to the Mosher property and the DEQ cleanup in process. As noted in the purpose statement of the current code, when this area was brought into the city, it was identified as environmentally sensitive, so changing the text within the same code section to accommodate someone that wants to make more money doesn't seem right. By my calculations, the proposed language will result in even more lots than considered in the Southeast Sherwood Master Plan. Have you, as you've probably accounted, it's really hard to get a definitive number of acres that will benefit, but using 36 acres that the applicant says will benefit from this, 36 or a PUD would have allowed 72 units. This new text would allow 115 lots based on four units per acre, and that's a worst-case scenario. But the Plan B.C. that's been talked about in the Southeast Sherwood Master Plan, which the neighbors and the other people in the area considered 82 units, so we are increasing it significantly just by piecemealing it. It seems that the difference is caused by the fact that, like the applicant mentioned, gross versus net, when the Planning Commission and the other factors were taken in, we were looking at 4.4 net buildable acres in the Southeast Sherwood Master Plan, which was ultimately a gross of 2.2 units per acre, and it was reduced when we delineated wetlands. At the time, I don't know if you all remember, Mosher property had a very large tree area, and part of our plan in the Southeast Sherwood Master Plan was the protection of the tree area and, in essence, causing a density transfer so that smaller lots could be built on their property in preservation of the trees and in consideration of building a large park area at the top, in addition to the regular wetland easements. As I've testified previously, if this piecemeal text amendment moves forward, then the city should incorporate safeguards to protect the neighbors and the community, um, uh, including adding some elements for minimum lot sizes, 10,000 square foot, 15,000 would be even better, only increase it to three units per acre instead of four. Do not allow variances. I don't know if you've been involved in a variance allowance where people get extra setbacks or other issues. Creating buffer zones. Create larger setbacks so people get the feel, if you get a 10,000-square-foot lot and still put a huge house on it, you're not gaining the setbacks and open spaces that we would have had in a very low-density residential environment. The open space goals envisioned in this very low density and the Southeast Sherwood Master Plan were closer to 30% of open space, including the protection of the tree properties and the parks. I would urge the council to deny this text amendment and remit it to the Planning Commission and the community for further study, and maybe revisiting the entire Southeast Sherwood Master Plan and letting it go to completion. Thank you.
Hi, Lisa.
Hello. Lisa Walker, 23500 Southwest Murdock Road, and I'm here representing myself, my husband, Roger, and my mother, Rafana, who lives with us. And I'm just going to read from the comments I'm handing around as well to make sure I get in my three, four minutes. I was involved in the development of some of this latest language in the latest proposal in front of you, and I want to be sure that a couple of issues are clarified and are clear in that. First of all, I guess it is really our intent, our desire that there be no text amendment change. We really recommend, as Jean has spoken, denial of this today so that we may go back and do some of the work that needs to be done to really address these concerns that are so important. This is the last area in Sherwood with this classification, as we know, and it was set up for a reason. The environmental-sensitive area was zoned that way for a reason, and we feel like it should be kept that way so that it can continue to be unique and add to the diversity of the city. Again, no decision needs to be made tonight at all, and it doesn't need to be made tonight, and it certainly doesn't need to be made at all. The applicant is, is only one property owner. Apparently tonight, their Moschers did speak, and they also have a desire to have this changed, so that is not applicable, I guess. But I guess the, if the changes have to be made, we really feel like it's important that the strict, that the clear guidelines, that there are clear guidelines documented to ensure that the spirit of that Southeast Sherwood Master Plan are considered going forward. There were two areas that I noted in the text amendment language in front of you tonight that I didn't feel were captured completely in moving from the Planning Commission meetings. I've indicated them there on your sheets there, and I don't know that I need to go into them completely, but basically, again, the 10,000-square-foot lots is very important because of the buffering properties. Fair Oaks are one-acre lots. Sherwood Estates are minimum of 12,000, minimum of 10,000, and most of them are 12 to, up to 19,000-square-foot lots. All the people that have spoken in these meetings prior have had a big concern about the buffering of the size of lots next to the edges of the development, be the largest Another issue that's not on your sheet tonight was the mention of the five-acre minimum size for a PUD. I had previously testified that really the only one other property owner was very close to that five acres, at 4.88 acres, and I was told by the staff that they would qualify for the same consideration that the Denali subdivision was, which allowed them to get a PUD for three acres. Denali subdivision was, which allowed them to get a PUD for three acres because of the environmental constraints of the area. I think that if we, it's important that we keep, if we keep it at five acres, which I do think should continue, that we make some designation so that maybe within maybe four and a half acres or, because I don't think that Mr. Husky, who owns the 4.88 acres, should be kept out of the PUD process. He does, I think that's close enough. And I'm not sure how to have it on the record so that he does qualify without a bunch of hoops to jump through. And I guess the last comment I have is the applicant was rejecting the notion that we should consider referencing the Southeast Sherwood Master Plan in this. And that actually is the whole title of what this part of the process is. This is the Southeast Sherwood Master Plan unit development. So I don't know how we could not consider very clearly the intent of those comments that we worked so many years and spent so many hours on. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Next is R. Claus.
Robert James Claus, 22211 Southwest Pacific Highway. Now, I don't really much care what this council does because I doubt it's going to be listened to, but let me tell you how that area came into existence. Cochran owned the area you see on the corner and the flats. He was stupid enough to get in an LID that the state was going to take away from him. And Jim Rapp came to me when we first moved here and said, "Will you buy this?" I said, "Are you out of your mind?" I said, "First of all, the 1939 Bureau of Mines gravel pit is there. It's got to be filled. And the balance of it is scab lands, and nobody in their right mind is going to build on those scab lands without a review of it." Now, when saying scab lands, most of I get a blank look, and it's just part of the problem with this council. You don't know what it is. Do you also understand that's the thousand-year pollen records for Oregon in Rock Creek? And do you also understand that's the water divide between the Lamont River and the Tuilaton? This is a critical resource area, both in its geology, in its water management, and in its retained research area. Now, what happened is we filled in the pit and we put in Chesapeake Park, and then the Fish and Wildlife were beginning to start, and they came to McLaren and I and said, "Will you give us the land?" McLaren and my wife decided we would, under the condition it would not be developed, and that's the reason the point's not developed. Not because we couldn't have developed it, but because at the same time, we went to the U.S. Corps of Army Engineers and pointed out the city of Sherwood was polluting the area, and if they didn't get a water treatment facility there, Black was going to sue them. That's why the area cleaned up. Now, I don't hear one word in this discussion about it's a critical watershed area. I don't hear one word it's U.S. Fish and Wildlife. I don't hear one word it's a thousand-year pollen records, and I don't hear one word that it's scab lands. Now, the problem is Kenny Riggs, who most of you wouldn't know or even heard of, used to drive the honey wagon out of the Lincolnery, and he spread chromium over that area. One thing chromium does is fix. That's the reason we have a national wildlife refuge, is because chromium fixes. It's not like selenium, it's not like arsenic, it's et cetera, it tends to fix. The reason it's starting to drift in that area is because J.C. Reeves built on Kenny Riggs' old property, and that's what's got it moving. I can't understand, and I don't understand, how the most precious resource we have left in this town is the entrance into the refuge. That's what's making Sherwood livable. That's what you're ultimately threatening with these density plans. Why has nobody talked to the studies that were done there by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service? And don't tell me to refer to this current director. Fish and Wildlife, because she doesn't know anything about it. I asked her. She'd have to go back to some of the people who retired. But what I'm trying to say is, if you're going to break up an area like that, that there's been studies, there's been money, there's been lifestyle preservation, whether you're going to develop it or not, do it without doing any environmental harm, you're going to end up in the same situation China's in. You're going to be spreading heavy metals and heavy salts all over, and it's all going to be in the name of development. And then we're going to choke on that spit in years to come. And that was the hope of Sherwood, to create a monitoring system of our streams with the fish and wildlife for a healthy environment for our children. And you're in a critical area, and none of those questions have been asked.
Last form I have on this issue is from Dean Boswell.
I'm Dean Boswell. I live at 22796 Southwest Lincoln Street, Sherwood, Oregon. I'm kind of jumping onto a moving train here, it looks like. And Jim Claus kind of answered my question for me, which was, and I know I've gotten letters on this about that area being contaminated. And I know everybody's got all these, you know, surveys and forms and things that they've done, but I'm pretty sure I've seen on Bill Nye that when you start moving dirt, any contaminants in it will flow into the wetlands and will kill those things. This is simple, grade-school science. I know I'm not with these guys of like, "Oh, subdivide this and subdivide that. I'm just a concerned citizen." But Jim's right. These are wetlands, and we need to protect them. We are one of the number-one cities in the United States to integrate wildlife with our city. And we take pride, my wife and I walk almost every day on the paths throughout the wetlands. It's beautiful. And I would hate to see that one of the biggest sections of wetlands, because right on, what wasn't discussed on the other side of that map is that big section of wetlands that goes up and goes over by the fire training center and all that stuff. That's the other side of that. So anything that you move will contaminate that area. And I agree with, I don't know this gentleman's name, but I agree with him. We definitely need to get people back in here and survey that land and see what it's going to pollute before we go start moving dirt, just so some people can have some big, huge houses. I mean, you want to have a big house, have a big house, but let's don't pollute our wetlands doing it. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to testify on this issue?
Can I ask one question? Between testimonies, can we ask you not to clap? I know you may agree with that person, but we have a whole stack of citizens who want to comment on another issue, and we'd just like to not be here till midnight. So I would greatly appreciate it if we could not clap in between every testimony. And that way, we'll keep moving and we all won't be here until the wee hours. So do I have? Okay. Are you Mr. Patrick?
Husky.
Husky. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Pat Husky. I reside at 23352 Southwest Murdoch Road. I own a number of properties within this area. We've been talking about this for seven years. I've been dealing with contamination for longer than that. And tonight, I just asked for a continuation on this text amendment. There's a lot of distractions tonight. I'd like to ask one question. Have you had a work session on this text amendment, or have you just been reading emails as they are presented? Back to Counselor Henderson.
Well, we have not had a recent work session, and we have gotten additional testimony this week and have been trying to absorb it, even as it's passed out tonight, so.
Yeah, so that, I guess that's why I'm asking for a continuance, so you can have a work session. It's very complicated, and I applaud the efforts of Planning Commission and the planners themselves, because we've been dealing with this for a very long time. And from where we started to where we are now, I think we're closer than we ever have been. And I've heard several people testify that 10,000 square foot lots is not the thing to do, and we can't develop that area. As a property owner, how are we going to clean the DEQ? As a citizen, you know, who's going to clean it up? I mean, the city doesn't have money. The federal government isn't going to come in. It's all up to the property owners. And for eight years, I've been spending hundreds of thousands of dollars trying to clean up that region. And the only way we could clean it up is to have just a few more lots, you know? And from the get-go, I own the property right on Murdoch Road. It has the old barn. I have a ton of trees, and my property's contaminated. And each and every time I come in here, I say, "Look, I'm the current owner, and yes, I'm a developer, and I'm a custom home builder. If you just work with me, I can build a beautiful neighborhood, save the trees, give the trail system, and maybe even save that old barn. I'm not sure. Yes, there's rock, there's everything, but did I go out and clearcut the trees before the tree ordinance? No."
No.
And so every time I step up here, I get this wealth of, you know, opposition from both the north and the south property owners saying, "Not in my backyard," or, "No, this is not okay." And we come out of here looking like the bad dude trying to just, you know, rape the land and make a bunch of money. We're not trying to do that. We're trying to earn a living within our town. I mean, I live here, I raised my family here, and I choose to do business in Sherwood because Sherwood's awesome. The planning staff is awesome. And look at how many people they have to appease. They have to appease the entire Sherwood group, the neighbors, the developers, and then people that don't know anything about things and come up here and start saying, you know, "You're going to contaminate the downstream." You know, if they knew, it's trivalent chromium, excuse me. Trivalent chromium, that was the constituent that was most at risk. You can go down the vitamin store and get 100% trivalent chromium. I'm not saying we're completely through this. These new standards EPA put out just means that someone's going to have to eat the soil 364 days a year for 30 years to ever even come close to having an issue. So this thing gets totally pumped up out of nowhere, and all we're trying to do is be good stewards of our property and very good stewards of our town. I want to clean it up, and I think we're close. So I'd like a continuance so that we can look at this and not talk numbers of nets and so forth and so on. I think I can save the trees, give the nature space, give the 40% tree canopy, and some beautiful homes. Not big McMansions, family homes that can come in here and rally behind what they're backing right now, maybe, or go down to the, you know, the park and play. So I'm for families, and I'm not an evil developer, and so please continue. Let's talk some more and find a solution. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Okay, since I don't have any other forms filled out, then the public hearing is closed. We will re-invite the applicant back to the table for her five-minute, I believe, and her, yeah, five minutes and 34 seconds.
You're awesome. Thank you.
Thanks. Not sure why, but.
There are a total of seven parcels of land that are zoned VLDR that have the potential for development. You heard from the Mozier's, that's the Mozier parcel. I believe that there is a letter on record from the Yuzons. They own 10 acres of land. They annexed their land in 2006. When it was in urban Washington County, they were zoned six units per acre. When it annexed into the city, about the time that we were all working on the Southeast Sherwood Master Plan, they were required to sign a Measure 37 waiver. So they gave up their six units per acre, which was 60 dwelling units. They gave it up because they said, "We'll work with the Southeast Sherwood Master Plan process, and although we're giving up our 60 units in Washington County, we hope to gain the majority of those back through the Southeast Sherwood Master Plan planning process." So instead of having 60 units per acre of potential development on their property, they now have about nine, because they own a total of 10 acres. I represent the first community property, with which you are all very familiar. Mr. Husky just testified tonight. He owns land that has already been developed as part of Ironwood Estates. He also owns the parcel with the old Murdoch barn, which is 4.88 acres. And I will categorically disagree with Linda Walker. I do not believe there's any way that Pat Husky could come in and get a variance and say, "I only have 4.88 acres, but please let me do a PUD." However, I don't think that this is a time and place for that discussion. There is also the Chin property, that is 3.01 acres, and the Walker property, that is 3.06 acres, that has one single dwelling that could potentially be redeveloped. So we have six, maybe seven, properties. You've heard from, or you've received testimony either in writing or orally, from the majority of those property owners supporting some kind of a text amendment. DEQ is managing the DEQ contamination. No one knows that process better than Pat Husky. He's been dealing with it for six or seven years. My client has also been dealing with it for years. DEQ is moving forward with an accelerated process of testing and evaluation, and we hope remediation of some kind. Pat is absolutely correct when he says that, at the end of the day, the remediation will not be paid for by the federal government, or the state government, or the county government, or the city government. Any and all remediation that needs to be done will have to be done by the property owners. And the only way a property owner can afford to do remediation is if they're doing development. I don't know of a property owner in Washington County today who's going to go out and spend money doing remediation and then leave his land fallow for his neighbors and adjacent subdivisions to walk their dogs on. That's just not to be expected. My last comment is that this land has been inside the urban growth boundary since we adopted urban growth boundaries in the late '70s. This land has always been considered developable land. Yes, there are environmental constraints. Yes, there are construction constraints. I agree with Mr. Husky. I would definitely appreciate a continuance if you felt it necessary in order to further evaluate and discuss this so that we could get to resolution. Do you have any questions? Oh, come on, you guys. Nope. I'm done, one minute and 20 seconds early. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So now, we've closed the public hearing, we've heard from the applicant, and now we have an opportunity for the council to discuss the ordinance, text amendment that's in front of us. In case you're wondering, it's on page 178. So counsel?
Yes.
Anybody like to make comment?
Phil's ready.
Discuss, Mr. Butterfield, Counselor Butterfield. You're on the floor.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, in lieu of receiving this documentation later rather than earlier, I think I need to have some more time to digest this and think about it.
I have to agree. I need more data. I need more information. I need more answers to questions, which I can get to staff. But this was 145 pages of confusion, and I need more guidance in understanding it. And then we, to be handed three testimonies that were pretty lengthy. I need more time.
So what you're saying is you both favor a continuance at this time?
Yes.
Counsel to my right?
I agree. And we've also been asked by two...
And we've also been asked by two parties to consider the continuance, and I think that it's prudent.
I don't think we actually have a choice to whether or not we have to continue it, and clearly we need a work session, so.
Counsel Grant?
Yeah, I completely agree. Could we, in the work session or with a report from staff, we just get a boiled-down executive summary of the questions that have been raised tonight? There's 100 and whatever number of pages to look at, but I don't think that 140 of them are in dispute, right? I mean, I think this boils down to a few questions, lot size, you know, and we don't have to see it all. If we could just kind of just sift it all out to what's at question so we could get our arms around just those things, and then hear from staff or the Planning Commission on what's our position on just those things. It would really be a lot easier for me because I got to wade through it to even find the notes on the questions that have been raised tonight. I'd appreciate that, and I really respect the work that the Planning Commission's done on this. I think if any commission in town has a harder job than ours, it's the Planning Commission because they got to just grind out the details way more than we do. And so I highly respect what they've done so far, but we really need to hear, you know, what it is about these issues.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
So just a question from a legal standpoint for staff or for our attorney. Is there any legal issues or time periods in which we need to be concerned about if we voted to continue tonight? And if we voted to continue, what would staff recommend when to have a work session so we can let the applicant know potentially when we would possibly revisit this? So that's a multitude of questions, so.
Counsel President, this is a legislative decision, so there's no deadline for when you have to make a decision.
Okay. And staff, do you feel like you have direction to organize a work session in the near future?
So you have questions probably about the DEQ, kind of a boiled-down version of the Southeast Sherwood Master Plan, kind of what that entails and the process that has been gone through with that, what kind of what net density means and what that would look like, a little bit of a clarification to that?
Well, and I also just have the question that the Planning Commission did ultimately make the recommendation, but it sounds like there was a lot of discussion. I'd like to hear kind of the Reader's Digest version of that. How did we get here?
So the staff report kind of boils down the three alternatives that they were mulling over, and they had kind of the same issues that you had. They had held three hearings about this, took a lot of public testimony, had a lot of deliberations about what had transpired over the years. And so it's a complicated area, as you can attest by the testimony this evening. So it does take a lot of thought to kind of think through what will be the best resolution. So I would suggest that kind of review that information a little bit in more detail and kind of take that testimony to heart.
So somebody needs to make a motion to continue?
I mean, will we continue this till we've had a work session and can be scheduled to a later council meeting?
A second.
Second. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Counsel President Henderson, I just have to thank staff, and I want to really publicly thank Planning Commission for their work.
Yes.
Because I want all the people who have the opportunity to be here to see the process to understand that you all do this as a volunteer, as do we. And it is complicated and hard, and we appreciate so much the efforts and the energies and the hours that all of you residents who are testifying to help the process, all of you are making because it's on a volunteer basis, your time and service is greatly appreciated.
Yeah. And I think it would be injustice not to review the work that was done to review this whole area, you know, seven years ago, so. Okay, I would like to propose to the council we take a 10-minute break and then reconvene in 10 minutes. Yes?
Okay.
Like to reconvene our meeting. Something I was going to do at the beginning of the meeting, and I think when I came out of that door and saw how many people were here, I somehow got distracted. And what I wanted to do was just briefly comment about the events that happened in Oklahoma yesterday. I think that more Oklahoma, I'm sure everybody in the room, if you're not, you must not read the paper or turn on CNN, was, you know, a devastating tornado. And the thing, as a public official and somebody who's very concerned with emergency management, and Captain Mark Daniels is sitting next to Julia, and he is our point person for emergency management, I think about, you know, how our community would respond to when such a travesty happens. So much loss of life, all those kids that were in that school, the loss of property, the overwhelming task they must be facing to try to rebuild their community. So I thought if we just took just a moment, maybe not a whole minute, and just a moment of calmness and silence and think about those people, and if, you know, if you believe in prayer or you believe in sending good positive feedback out to Oklahoma, I'd like to do that for just a few minutes in light of what a small town like ours is going through. Okay, all right. I have a small script that the counsel and staff thought it might be helpful for me to read, for us to read tonight before we start. I have, I think, 20 some forms filled out. Most of them, of course, are about Walmart, but some of them are about other issues in our community. So if you haven't filled out a form, please do so. Complete one of the forms on the back table, submit it to Sylvia Murphy. She's our city recorder, right there, sitting next to our city manager, Dro Gal. I have been handed to them an order which they were received. Although you may be here to talk about the proposed Walmart project, there may be other topics that citizens might want to address as well. I would like to remind you that the city released an updated frequently asked questions document, which is on the website. I have a copy of it right here, and it has some additional questions that have been submitted to staff, which they're trying to answer. I haven't had a chance to read this myself, but I'd like to thank staff for taking time to put this on the website. When you come to the mic, just like we've done for the public hearing, please introduce yourself, speak into the microphone so that we can hear you, so that the audience can hear you, and so that the record will be clear for not only the videotape for when Sylvia transcribes. As always, we limit testimony to four minutes. We want to hear from you as citizens and representatives and members of our community, but please try to limit your testimony to new information or questions or ideas that you might have. If you agree with a statement that someone else has made, it's best that you just state that you agree with that statement rather than just repeating the same statement over and over. This comment period is for you to address comments and questions to the city council directly. Please always keep your comments professional and respectful. Please don't use personal attacks when you're at the dais, and those types of tactics won't be tolerated during the comment period. We are tonight anticipating a number of ideas from citizens to adopt a variety of ordinances related to the Walmart projects. We are very much interested in your ideas and your input, and we may or may not discuss them during our council comment period tonight. The other option that we have is we may ask staff to do research and look into more information for us. We can't draft legislation overnight, especially ordinances, and we want to make sure we follow any normal process we would in creating an ordinance, which is we want to be careful and thoughtful and do research and make sure we follow the law when we do so. Finally, thank you for coming tonight, expressing your concerns and questions. We want to hear from our citizens and appreciate the time that you're giving to our community. Just as a point of reference, we normally end council meetings at 9:30, depending upon where we're at. At 9:30, we have 20. Here, we'll pull the council and then maybe at that point decide to move to 10 o'clock at that time. Okay? So the first person I have is Jeanette Hatcher. Who lives on 12th Street.
Counsel President, she was in the front row. She may have left, so.
Okay. Okay, so that was a non-Walmart issue. Okay. So maybe we can invite her back to the next meeting. Okay. Second is R. Claus.
Robert James Claus, 2221 Southwest Pacific Highway. Wouldn't dare you, there are two kinds of things.
Is your mic on, sir?
I think it's on. Is it on?
Yes.
There are two kinds of things you learn in administrative hearings. One is substantive due process, the other is procedural. And I'm going to tell you, every time someone comes here, "We didn't elect you to vote your conscience. We elected you to bring issues to us and let us know what we think." That's what representative democracy is about. You're confusing badly the whole idea of democracy. If you think you were put up there to vote your opinion, you're not. And if you don't believe me, look at the last election. When you get a procedural due process, there's two parts to it. One is just the courtesy of expecting when somebody's going to say something to listen to it. And the second part is not to get into content. You can't get into content. Political speech is the most protected speech we have. It has strict scrutiny. You're going to regulate it, you're going to come up with a reason. And more than that, when you get into trying to ban viewpoint, you're absolutely prohibitive. If you don't believe me, look at what President Obama's done with the IRS. Same problem when after viewpoint speech. You can't do it. Americans won't tolerate it, even if they don't agree with the viewpoint. Now, I attended the Walmart hearings. I gave them names of people at Walmart that could have been called, that would have given a negative confirmation they were coming here. They had a letter of intent months ago. When you start shutting that off, and then you turn around and you impact lifestyle, and then you turn around and say, "Come here and be polite," procedurally, you've created what sent Earl Gideon to prison. You're not letting the facts get on the table, and that's what the Supreme Court doesn't like and won't like. The reason America is progressing today is because of places like Stanford that prize information and letting people make intelligent decisions. The moment you get to content, the moment you get to procedurally cutting off someone, and the moment you get to not voting, you get an audience just like this. And it's not some old crotchety guy like me that came to Sherwood and saw something that affects people permanently. It's going to be anyone who comes here because they're protecting their lifestyle and their mind. Now, you may think you're protecting your lifestyle, but you're simply up there as a representative to listen. And the moment you start telling us what we can say, and that's content, you're stepping out of a role as an elected official. And when you start curtailing it and curtailing the input, you're starting a fight, whether you like it or not. And it's going to get carried into the polling place, and if you don't believe me, ask the last mayor. You won't do it. We won't tolerate it. That's why, that's the distinguishing factor in America today, is the First Amendment. It's what's growing our economy, it's what's freeing us, and it's what's making us so we're a people that people admire all over the world. I've never seen anything in the time I've worked with it all people admire an elected official respects free speech. If you don't respect free speech, you don't respect the Americans. And what I'm seeing here and what you're seeing is the tail end of shutting off a process and not thinking you have to answer to us. You'll answer here, you'll answer at the poll, and in the process, you'll become very disliked. You can argue with anybody and say what you want, but you better be open and respect their viewpoint. And that's not what's happening here. We didn't know what was happening. We were told oppositely, and now the same people think they run the community. They don't. This community is run by the citizens. They own it in every sense.
Originally, I had come to express my opinions regarding Walmart, but I believe all of you and several of the staff have received my email comments and understand them very veritably. So one of the things I wanted to share with you is, having watched the last city council meeting, having gone over a lot of the documentation that you have all provided, I am frustrated at the council's unwillingness to join the community to stop the Walmart development. Additionally, I reviewed the action plan for development within Sherwood, 40-some-page documents, and I provided quite a bit of feedback as well through the process that you've provided. What I've noticed is that the council and the planning department don't seem to be in touch with what Sherwood citizens want. And I would urge you to reconsider what you're using to guide the city vision and represent the citizens of Sherwood, not developers. Additionally, I understand that a recall petition has been filed to remove Counsel Langer. Rather than drag the citizens through that, I urge you to resign your position. I do not feel that you are representing the community interests anymore. You're representing your own. And that's all I have.
I live at 15336 Southwest High Point Drive in Sherwood. I am, and that was a good segue, thank you very much. I have lived in Sherwood for 17 years. In August of 2011, my wife was diagnosed with stage IV non-Hodgkin's lymphoma, and the prognosis was not good and is still not good. The one silver lining in all of this has been this community that we live in. We have been amazed at the support that we have received in this community. Financially, we didn't make a meal for a year. I mean, top to bottom, it has been extraordinary, and I have never been more proud to be a part of this community. In the last few weeks, that foundation was shaken a little bit on my behalf, and probably not for what most of you people here are thinking that it is. You know, we all have the right in this country and in this city to protest what we don't like. We all have the right to protest Walmart coming here, absolutely. But when you make those protests personal and you call out the Langer family, you call out Matt Langer for everything that I have read, that I've seen that is incorrect in most cases and uninformed, it's unconscionable. Matt, yes, certainly I know the Langers. I am friends of the Langers. I know the Langer family. I know their children. And they are doing what we are all doing here, and that is trying to raise a family, trying to help build a community. The Langers have been here 150, I don't know what the right number is, Jim, so don't quote me on it. I don't know how long they've been here, but without the Langers, this community would not be what it is today, period. You know, I've seen yard signs out there. I have seen Facebook posts. I have seen all sorts of different things, saying stuff particularly about Matt. But what I challenge all of you, some of which are here tonight who have signs in your yards, remember that the Langers have children. Those children have friends that are asking them what's going on. We're all trying to do the same thing here, and that is be good stewards of the community and so forth. The Langers have every right, followed every piece within their legal right, to develop that land, period. There are three things, speaking particularly about Walmart, I'll be quickly, that I hear people talking about. It's going to put small business out of business. It's going to bring a lesser quality of people, and that's not my term, it's a quote that I've seen on more than one occasion, and traffic. And... And I think ninety-five percent, I don't know what the correct number is, ninety-five percent of our businesses, small businesses in Sherwood, are service businesses, real estate companies, coffee shops, dentists, nail salons, none of which are going to be impacted by Walmart or be put out of business by Walmart. They don't compete with big box. The lesser quality of people also is unconscionable. Shame on you, people who are putting signs in your yards, quoting the Langers, and saying those things about what you call lesser quality people. Those people are simply just trying to have a better life for their family, buy lesser expensive food and products. You know, a lot of those people that don't want those lesser quality people have minimum wage people mowing their lawns and cleaning their homes and so forth, that they have no issues with them. Traffic is an issue. If I had a choice, whether it was Walmart or something else, I wouldn't choose Walmart. But now that Walmart is going to be in here, I'm supporting it. I'm all for it. I'm for less expensive products. I don't think it's going to impact, as negative as everyone says. Where are these people going to come from? There's a, okay.
Next person, Jennifer Harris.
My name's Jennifer Harris. I'm at 21484 Southwest Rollick Avenue.
Okay. We can barely hear you.
Is that better?
That's better.
I'm going to read because I know I have a short amount of time and a lot to say.
Okay.
My name's Jennifer Harris. I'm president of the Sherwood Community Action Committee. I'm here tonight to express the concerns regarding the proposed Walmart development and to present over seven hundred letters from Sherwood residents asking that you keep Sherwood one of Oregon's most livable cities. These letters were collected in the last three days. Our community has come together in widespread opposition to the impact Walmart will have on our town. We, the residents of Sherwood, feel it is important that Sherwood stand up for our community, our workers, our livability, our small businesses, and existing retailers. Excuse me, I'm nervous. Please take action to support our city by addressing the very real threat that the proposed Walmart supercenter brings to our town. We are at a crossroads here in Sherwood, and the decisions you make over the next few weeks will have long-lasting impacts on our lives. All workers in Sherwood deserve fair wages, decent benefits, and an opportunity to thrive. Our local businesses treat their employees well. We ask that you work to ensure that large corporations such as Walmart must and do the same if they locate here in Sherwood. We ask you consider the following ordinances. Number one, a part-time workers' bill of rights to ensure large retailers are not putting a strain on state resources and putting our local businesses at competitive disadvantage. Large retailers should need to provide stable employment and treat their workers fairly if they're going to be here. Included in these ordinance should be the language requiring retail employers with over one hundred and fifty employees, for the employees, the ability to request a full-time schedule without penalty prior to additional employees being hired. Notice of work schedules at least two weeks in advance. Provisions of proportional benefits, that is, they must provide part-time employees who work at least fifteen hours a week with benefits proportional to those working a full-time schedule. If employees are receiving state assistance such as food stamps, insurance through the Oregon Health Plan, et cetera, we feel those costs should be covered by the employer, not the taxpayers of Oregon. We would ask that you ban large retailers from staying open twenty-four hours and also not allowing twenty-four-hour parking. None of our existing large stores are open round the clock, and having one do so creates an undue burden on taxpayers, our police force, and other emergency responders. We ask that you ban the sale of firearms within a thousand feet of a school. St. Francis is within the boundary of the proposed Sherwood Town Center. We require that if a retailer of over a hundred thousand square feet moves in, that the building must be reoccupied within a year or torn down at the original retailer's expense in order to avoid future blight in our community. It is important for a healthy community. Do not let Sherwood's workers and businesses fall prey to the types of corporate policies perpetrated by Walmart. Sherwood can and should do better. Ask yourself, what is the cost of low price? I ask that you support Sherwood and take action now. Stop Walmart from destroying our community as it has so many others. Thank you. I just want to thank the volunteers for collecting over, again, seven hundred letters in two days.
Next is Randy August.
Hi. My name's Randy August. I live at 22372 Southwest Nottingham Court in here in Sherwood. And I'm just a concerned citizen with this Walmart going in. It says here that ODOT and Washington County and the, what is it, DKS did a traffic study that said it wouldn't impact the traffic around here. I disagree. The planned one that was supposed to go into the Cedar Hills Mill area, they shut that one down due to traffic, and it's right next to a freeway. So, with that, I'm just upset that, you know, that this town would allow this to come and that, I guess, if it does end up being here, I'm no longer going to become a resident of Sherwood. Thank you.
Next is Dean Boswell.
I'm Dean Boswell. I live at 22796 Southwest Lincoln Street, Sherwood, Oregon. You know, I typed up this nice abusive letter. But the truth is, you know, even though I'm against Walmart, and I probably will mention in my four minutes Walmart, but the truth is, is I'm very disappointed in the city council. And I know Chris Anna Clark, that she's been working to try to make things better and not laying blame. And I'm sure Robin has been also, because I know that she works hard out in this community. But every person here does something for this community. I'm also disappointed in the planning commission. Every single person here does something in the community. We have people who volunteer at schools. We have people who volunteer at churches. We have one of the largest food banks this side of Portland, clothing banks. There are just amazing things that happen in this community. And all I get from most of the city council and definitely all the planning commission is it's their fault they didn't come to these dang meetings. We cannot have, how many, how many people voted last time? Was that seven, eight thousand people? Are we really going to expect seven to eight thousand people to show up at these meetings? We voted for you people, and I don't know who got the planning commission into their spots, but we did this expecting that you would do what's best for the community. All I've seen so far is what's best for a pocketbook. This is just disgraceful. These people, I said, they go out into the community, and they work their butts off to make this a great community. And you want them to add, basically, between the planning commission and here, that's every week, every Tuesday, we're going to be here, we're going to have seven to eight thousand people to show up here? The only, we don't even have a facility in Sherwood that can house that. And the only piece of land that was big enough for that is where Walmart's going. So, if you really want to blame us for the fact that this happened, and you don't want to take part of the blame, that you didn't go back and check ordinances and check past laws and whatever else to protect this community, if you want to push that blame on us and you want us to come, then you need to find a facility that's going to house every single one of us to show up and to give our opinion, and you need to be there for that time to listen to every single person. The only other thing I have to say, and this is probably going to get me kicked out, I'm planning on trying to be at every meeting I can just because of this, but the last thing, and it may get me banned, is what was done.
Mr. Boswell, if you're going to say something that you think will get you banned, then maybe you should rethink. What, no, seriously, think, think about how you want to say it in a professional manner. Like, if you were at work, and you were frustrated, and you were sitting at a table, that's what we would like, I would like you to convey to us. Because we want, I want to hear you. And I don't, I don't want to see you banned.
Okay. I, but I want to. I would do my best.
Okay.
Money was put above this community. Money was put above people. And I will tell you this right now, any person in this world that puts money first and puts that above the love they have for their fellow human being, doesn't know how to love and has to think in the back of their mind every day of their lives, "Does anybody really love me?" I know that, that people involved may not be, you may not even know people face-to-face of what's happened, but they're still people. They still have families. And anything that is out there about Walmart, there's all this stuff on Walmart on the web, and it's all done by universities of statistics. Crime is going to go up. We're going to have workers at Walmart that get treated badly. And it's going to fall back onto the taxpayers. Period. This is bad. Thank you.
Next is Nancy Taylor.
My name is Nancy Taylor. I live at 17036 Southwest Lindley Way. And I want to tell you just one thing. I want to make a comment. All these people that are here may not come after the Walmart issue is resolved, but I intend to come every Tuesday night for as long as I live here, feeling very doomed by what happened. I will give up NCIS. I will give up whatever is on Tuesday night. I will give up anything Tuesday night to make sure this never happens again.
Nadia Belor-Beloff. And friend, it looks like.
Yeah. She's going to hold my edboard.
Okay.
Okay. So, my name is Nadia, okay. My name is Nadia Beloff, and I live on 22741 Southwest Lincoln Street. And so, I do 4H, and I thought, I wanted to make an edboard about Walmart. And so, I made an edboard, and I'd like to read it to you. So.
She has to come back.
Yeah. Okay. So, it's, name is Why Walmart is Not a Personable Business. In other words, why Walmart is bad. So, the first thing I wanted to say on it was Walmart's business practices. The owners of Walmart are the tenth richest people in the world. I mean, they are billionaires. So, that means that they earn billions a year. And as I said at the planning commission meeting, the average American would earn like two million in their lifetime. And so, they, so that's just a comparison. And so, they don't really share their wealth with anybody. So, their employees earn like twenty-four thousand dollars or less a year. And the people that make their stuff earn close to nothing, often in sweatshops and things like that. And so, and also, I just wanted to say that they aren't good for the environment. And then, I wanted to say about what Walmart does to our community. So, first of all, it puts the town's value down. Having this big box store puts the value of the town down. And then, it brings crime and an unsafe feeling. And we all know about the traffic. I mean, I don't even drive, and I can kind of tell. Also, I don't think that the business, that a business with such a bad reputation really is a good fit for Sherwood. And so, the last thing I wanted to say was about the workers and how Walmart, what they do to their workers. So, I had this picture. These are all workers. These people work overseas, and these people work overseas, but these people work in America. And so, I think that they need a higher wage. As they were saying, I really agree with the higher wage, what's it called, thingy. And I think that they need to pay their workers more and not just not pay them at all. And then, I had some pictures. This was a town with Walmart and then big empty box store after. And then, I just thought that that was a good picture. It was of kids protesting Walmart, because we don't want it either. And then, Holly and I wrote on our plates in ketchup when we were bored one night, "No Walmart." So, you can see that picture there. It's kind of small. And then, up there is just a picture of a march from the Sherwood Gazette. So, thank you.
Tony Bevel.
Good evening. My name is Tony Bevel. I live at 17036 Southwest Lindley Way. And the man that I wanted to speak to tonight is conspicuously absent. I respect Mr. Middleton, the mayor. I, he's the one person I respect that's in front of me. Okay? And that's the man I wanted to talk to. You guys, I like to use analogy. You are canaries, okay? And we're little miners, working away, working away. Okay? Your job is to chirp when there's danger. We have danger in Sherwood, and you guys didn't chirp. You know, you just let it go on, no matter what you said. I attended your meeting last Monday about, "We can't stop it. We didn't know." That is BS. That is BS. I read Bill Middleton's The Oregon Voter's Guide. At the end, I asked him what the number one, his number one goal was, and he said, "To bring public trust and transparency back to our government and to serve all of our residents." You haven't done that. You haven't done that at all. And I would like, I hope Mayor Middleton, you know, addresses this. I hope he's not sick, but it's kind of strange to me.
Need to explain where he is.
For you. Shame, and shame on me, because I've walked by here when you've had meetings here, and I've walked by. I won't do that again. Thank you. You know what? I've been in a rage for the past two weeks. I've been in a rage for the past two weeks, and my significant other can attest to that because of this, because I'm so worked up. And, I don't know, can't say anymore.
Thank you. Kelly Birtle. B-I-R-T-L-E.
My name's Kelly Birtle. I live at 23240 Southwest Orchard Heights. For those of you who want to camp out on my lawn, feel free. And I've got several statements. One, I am extremely upset with this because I didn't know. I knew nothing about this. Last I heard was that Walmart was squashed. You know, I don't care if it's Walmart. I don't care if it's Winco. I don't care if it's Costco. We do not need a big box store in our small town endangering our children, polluting our air, polluting our sidewalks and our streets. Our kids know that they can go outside and walk freely no matter where they go in Sherwood. You honestly think they're going to be able to do that once any big box store is going to come in? Any big box store. They are going to drag in all these other people from all these communities all over this place. If they want a Walmart so bad, let them build it in their community. We don't want it, so we shouldn't get it. Somebody had mentioned how that, you know, the Langers knew what was going on. You know, I don't know if you did. I don't know if you didn't. I really don't care. The bottom line is, you could have put a rose garden there. You could have done something that would have benefited our community a lot better than any box store. Any box store. And I know a lot of people, when I was out on Sunday getting these petitions signed, they were talking about Whole Foods, that they would love to see that. You know, that's fantastic, too. But what is Whole Foods going to do for our community, for our environment? Not a whole hell of a lot, except for a rose garden or, you know, an arbor, whatever. You know, put plants, trees. You know, do something that's going to benefit. The traffic is going to absolutely swallow this town whole. I don't care how many extra lanes you put in, this town is not designed for that type of traffic. It was and is this community that built Sherwood, not big investors, not Walmart, not Winco, not whoever else is surrounding this area. It was these people. And everybody who's not here, this is who built Sherwood. And they have the right to still live in the Sherwood, in the town that they developed, that they moved here, that they wanted their children and their grandchildren and their great-grandchildren to grow up in. We start letting these big box stores come in here, this town's going to be nothing. This town is going to turn into a city, and that is not what we want. This town is going to turn into a city and that is not what we want. You talked about being thoughtful at the beginning of this. Not one of you were thinking about us when you guys agreed to let these people move in and build on this property. You didn't put not one of us before your own greed. We as a community don't want this, so why are we, so why are you, the people who we elected, why are you going against us? Why are you going against what we want? You are supposed to be our voices. You are supposed to represent us and do what we are asking. You are doing the exact opposite, every single one of you. Can any of you live at, working at a minimum wage job? Can any of you up there on the board, on the panel, work minimum wage, raise your children, and still live the lifestyle that you live today, right now? That's what you're asking for anybody who moves into this big box area. They're not going to, they're not going to pay their, their people. They're not going to do it. Minimum wage, you can live off of that? How come none of you are? Walmart can afford to pay their people more than minimum wage. They can afford health insurance, they can afford sick leave, and they choose not to because they are greedy, they are selfish, and you people are allowing them to get away with it. You guys are no better than they are by allowing this. You are asking every single one of us to live at minimum wage, but yet not one of you are willing to give up your jobs, your homes, your lifestyles. You guys can afford to, we can't. And our children are so not going to be safe. Have any of you seen the Walmart Youtubes? Those type of people are the people you want in your community? You want those type of communities wandering our streets at 2:00 in the morning?
Okay.
Is that what you want? Because that's what's going to happen.
Thank you for your comments. Stephen Langer?
Well, obviously, I'm not going to be very popular.
Okay.
But you're going to hear a couple of things here.
Okay.
All right?
Can I make a, can I make a request, Mr. Langer, before you start? I, I would really like to keep this meeting professional as possible.
It will be.
I know, I'm not, I'm not addressing you, sir, directly, but I, I know there's a lot of high emotion here, but heckling and commenting while somebody is talking either for or against this issue isn't respectful. I don't think it represents our community the way we want to be seen and the way we propose, we, we say that we are, that we're a special place, and we are a special place. But heckling and making comments under your breath isn't respectful. It's certainly not what you would do if you were sitting at the dais and talking about something that was really important to you. So, I have more people here to talk and I would just appreciate it if you could keep your comments to yourself unless you're at the dais. If you have comments and you want to come up and talk to us or talk to staff afterward, we'll certainly be here, so.
Thank you, Councilman President.
You're welcome. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Council, for allowing us to speak tonight and I appreciate your time. Because of the situation at hand, I'm going to be reading this statement. Obviously, it's much easier to stay on track. We have lived in this, in this city for, or in this community for 125 years. My great-grandfather settled here in 1879 and he immigrated from Prussia. They donated the land for the Saint Cathol, Catholic, God, I came to talk now, Saint Francis Catholic Church. That was years ago. He also donated land for the J. Clyde Hopkins Elementary School many years ago. In fact, there's people, I'm sure, in this community that would stab me in the back at this very moment that live in Glen Eagle, and that land was also part of his 320 acres deeded to him from the state of Oregon when he homesteaded here. They've contributed immensely. My mother provided meals for the Catholic Church on numerous, numerous times, for people who needed help or for funerals. Mom and dad lived here for 60-some years and raised the three of us boys, and we all worked the farm that entire time. We have lived here longer than anybody in this community, unless somebody wants to step up and, and count me wrong, I'm not sure. It is unfortunate that my mother was able to see this development happen. She was aware that there were several possibilities, and unfortunately, she passed away a year ago. And she lived with me for four years, three days a week on dialysis. It was not a pleasant experience. In her last four days alive with me, where she died at home in my bedroom, she only regret was that she would not live to see the completion of this. And there was an email sent to Matthew that I want to read that is inconscionable and unacceptable. I don't care about your opinions. You have a right, every right, to say that. I taught for 31 years and I respect your right to say what you want to say. But to attack the family, accusing Matt of parading my mother during her funeral around... Oh, you can, Jim, laugh all you want, Jim. Matthew Dean had nothing to do with the funeral. I paid for the entire thing. We made the arrangements for that horse-drawn carriage to come from Sweet Home Oregon. I've got the cancelled check and I'll be happy to show all of you. But to call for impeachment and to make a statement here that she would laugh all the way, he laughed all the way to the bank as my mother was die, was dead in that casket is unconscionable. You have a right, but you have no right to personally attack a family, any of you. It's unacceptable. If you want to be professional, be professional. And shame on you for that type of behavior. It's just not acceptable. So, if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Lori Randall?
Hi, my name is Lori Randall. I live at 22710 Southwest Orchid Place, Sherwood, and I have a number of livability issues I'd like to bring up. First of all, I would like to ask that the city post the plans for the new art center. They, even though the machine shop was torn down, the discussion is not being reopened about what goes in that building. While I trust that the, that Councilors Folsom, Henderson, and Butterfield will do a wonderful job giving us a much-needed theater space and auditorium space, I would truly like to be sure that there is as much space or some space in that building for the visual arts. I've been emailing with Joe Gahl and he was, he indicated that two classrooms would be added.
Have been added?
I don't know if those, right, but I don't know if those are art classrooms or those are meeting space classrooms. I would like, if they're art classrooms, I'd like to see that they include large sinks, storage space, durable floors and surfaces, things that are actual art spaces that could be used for classes, not just a meeting space like this. You put carpeting on the floor, it's no good to us. So, I would like to see dedicated and appropriate gallery space, not the lobby. A painter should not be designing a stage and this, and an actor should not be designing the galleries. I don't see any input from visual artists as my issue with that. And I really would like to see what's being proposed, available on the website for everybody to look at and comment. Second, I'd like to urge everybody to go to the city's website and read through the Sherwood Town Center Action Plan. This, this plan refers generally to the land between 99 and Willamette, the creek on one side and Langer Parkway, not including Walmart. I, I think it's no coincidence that this plan and the Walmart Plaza have the same name. It certainly increases the confusion. After everybody reads it, I urge you to take the survey. The staff was kind enough last time that it was brought up in front of Planning Commission. This is a survey that was available to them. They have since made it available for the public to fill out. I urge everybody to do that. I, for one, do not want to see low and medium-density residential in that area, basically between Six Corners and Old Town, turned into high-density, like the ill-conceived project across from my house on Willamette. I've heard that project referred to as the insta-slum and I worry that it will become that. I do not want to see four, five, six-story insta-slums allowed to be built in Old Town. Part of what that plan proposes is, is allowing four or five, well, above-three-story buildings to be built, basically doing away with the cap on three-story buildings. I don't want to see the, the city continue to put in the ugly blue fixtures without even going out to think about something else. Anyway, everybody needs to have their voice heard by filling that out. Third, I'd like to count, urge, I'd like to urge the council to pass any ordinances possible which may discourage Walmart from opening, and if they do open, ordinances which will force them to improve working conditions for those they employ, and more importantly, ordinances which will improve the safety for Sherwood residents and the livability of the small town we all love. If the store does open, I urge everyone to boycott it. Shop at local stores that treat their employees, suppliers, and communities in a more upstanding manner. I'd rather see one large empty store in Sherwood than a lot more small ones. Finally, I urge the residents of Sherwood to sign the recall petition against Mr. Langer when it's presented and it is floating in this room. While it has not been determined that he has done anything illegal, I believe it's clear as a council member, he is not working in the best interests of Sherwood, and I can no longer trust in his decision-making as a council member. I, too, urge Mr. Langer to resign.
Thank you.
My name's Rick Horr. I've been friends with the Langer family for over 30 years. I've watched all the kids grow up and everything. And Steve called me and told me about the email he got, and it's terrible that somebody would attack somebody the way that the gentleman with his five kids or whatever did on this email. I'm the one that got the horse-drawn carriage for his mom and everything, got it all organized and everything, and Matt did not go down the, down the lane, you know, bragging about how much money he got. And nobody has any brains in this situation to know. Number one, if this, I could have purchased this land, sold it to Walmart, sold it to anybody. Number two, Fred Myers could have purchased it. Does anybody know how Fred Myers treat their workers? I know three people that were high in Fred Myers and they never got a 40-hour work week because that way they didn't have to give them insurance. Everybody's talking about Walmart being a bad guy here. I know about a lot of big stores and what the, how they treat their people too, so they better do some research before they get up here talking. And then they're putting all you guys down for, you know, you letting Walmart come in. Well, they don't have a, they don't have anything to know about the laws and stuff. You guys aren't the ones that rule who buys the land or whatever. Nobody can rule who buys the land. And just like here, nobody has brought this up at all. In 1995, when this union development was, was approved, was Langer on the board? No, Langer was not on the board. In 2007, when this plan development was reassured, was Langer on the board? No, Langer wasn't on the board. You guys are in here, are just attacking the Langer family, that's all you're doing. You're attacking the name just because they sold the land for a lot of money and you don't want anybody to be any better than, than you guys are. And I'll tell you, this is really, this is really bad deal. And I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Wes Friedman?
Counselor Henderson, are you going to consider the 9 o'clock, 9:30 time?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, go ahead. I have five more.
I'd like to keep going. I think I'm getting a lot, I'm getting a lot out of this.
Are there any others that'll come in?
We appreciate your patience in this. At our last meeting, I just wanted to make this quick note. We did actually have the plans for the cultural center in the meeting that followed. It was just at about 10:25. So, those can, I think we can get those online.
Mr. Friedman?
My name is Wes Friedman.
Welcome.
21315 Southwest Baylor Way. First off, I'm not going to repeat everything that Tim said and other people have said. I mean, Tim Veran is in. I wholeheartedly agree. I was going to bring up the part about Matt's grandma's funeral also, but that's been brought up. I'm just going to say, I'm proud to call Matt Langer one of my best friends. My family is friends with him, my kids play with him, with his kids. I couldn't be more proud to call him my friend. And I support the Langer, I support the Langer family wholeheartedly. The arguments about, you know, wages and benefits and all that and big box stores. Last time I checked, Home Depot and Target were big box stores, so I'm a little confused about why Walmart's so bad. Keep hearing about traffic, but we wish it would have been Fred Myers. Well, doesn't Fred Myers bring traffic? I mean, everything's going to bring traffic. The Langers have been here forever. They sold their property. They can no longer farm it. The same people complaining about Walmart would be complaining about the pesticides, the noise, the dust, everything else. Who's paying the taxes on the property? The Langers are. If you want a rose garden, knock down your house, pay taxes on it, and build a rose garden. That's ridiculous. I don't understand that kind of argument. And as far as recalling Matt, that, that's the, you know, no good deed goes unpunished. He gave up a lucrative career at a construction company to come home and take care of his family because his father had a stroke and he needed to be here to help him out and help out his family. And what does he get? You know, and then he volunteered, ran for city council. Last time I checked, he wasn't getting rich working for city council. And none of you are, and all of you are getting attacked. The personal attacks are ridiculous. Matt is an honest man. I trust him with my life, I trust him with my kid's life. And I am sick and tired of all the personal attacks. Keep it to the facts. Try and put some logic with your facts. He did nothing wrong, they did nothing wrong. You wouldn't sell your house to the lowest bidder, you'd sell your house to the highest bidder. Minimum wage job, yeah, Walmart may be a minimum wage job, so is Target, so are a lot of jobs. I had a minimum wage job when I was 16. Guess what? I didn't, I worked it when I was 16 and then I moved on to a better-paying job. Minimum wage is a temporary fix. It's not supposed to be something you support a family on. I don't understand the logic or the lack of logic and reasoning in these arguments. And I'll leave it at that, just say, I'm proud to call Matt my friend and I just am tired of the personal attacks.
Preidel? Can't, maybe you could help me with your last name pronunciation?
Pre-Dale.
Pre-Dale.
Thank you. I live at 22677 Southwest Lincoln Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you this evening. I value the opportunity on nights like this where we can actually engage in conversation and express what is great about our country too, with being able to have freedom of speech and be able to speak in a democratic environment. I have a couple of concerns. First of all, regardless of what other, whatever box store goes into our 145,000 square feet there, Lincoln Street around the area, to me at least, is being called Lincoln Highway. People coming down from Sunset, from the other side of the hill, are flying down our street. I know the city has been approached by numerous residents on our street specifically, and the City of Sherwood Police Department has also been requested to post additional officers there, neither of which seem to have happened or to change anything with people's either speeding up or down the road. So, from a safety standpoint, regardless if a building goes in there or not, that's an immediate request that myself, my family, and the residents of Sherwood, or at least Lincoln Street are requesting as soon as possible. Secondly, too, regarding those kind of people, I feel like there's a hypocrisy in the air a lot of the time when we're talking about those kind of people. We're in favor of people earning a living wage and that is good. And at the same time, those people who were categorizing as minimum wage people or low-income people are no less valued than any single person in this room, simply not. So, for us to sit here or to yell at each other, to devalue each other, that doesn't make us any better than the people we quote-unquote "don't want" in this town. So, when you're thinking about it, have some integrity and self-perception, because without that, you're not doing much better than the people you don't want here. And I ask you two to define what those people are and then go share it with somebody and see and get their feedback, because whether it's a minority or whether it's somebody who doesn't look like you, they're just as valued as anyone else in this room, regardless if you like their lifestyle or not. And secondly, Matt, I don't know you. We're small business owners. My wife and I own Blue Plume Art Studio. It's our home business here on Lincoln Street as well. I'm all for consumerism and capitalism. I want to make a profit in our business, and if we got the chance to sell it, if we got the chance to make a buck off of something that we're doing well, and it is going well... got the chance to make a buck off of something that we're doing well, and it is going well, thank goodness. And so for people to attack somebody in a capitalistic environment where somebody is trying to make a living based on selling a piece of property or running their business well, that is America. That is what we have been blessed to be in. So for the opportunity to make a million, or however millions of dollars it is to sell a piece of land, or to invest in a small business, those same small business owners just like myself had the opportunity to come to Sherwood to say, "I'm going to put my stake in the ground here and try to make something grow." Thankfully, the art studio is going well. I am concerned a little bit about the impact of crime specifically. With any type of store going in, my background is sleeping next to, sleeping with a baseball bat next to my bed. I don't want to be in that environment in Sherwood here, whether that's Walmart, or Fred Meyer, or any other box store coming in. I'm concerned about crime. And in the proposed budget from Mayor Middleton, he was suggesting that we cut two police officer positions. That's not helpful for us. It's not helpful for the city. And if there is an issue with crime, I recommend to the city council to consider a budget that does not cut a police force, but instead protects us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.[686.82][686.82](APPLAUSE) Jennifer Pradel?
My name is Jennifer Pre-Dale. I live at 22677 Southwest Lincoln Street, and I have a little story for you guys that I wrote out for tonight. And mine is about living wage. We used to live in LA, six-lane freeways, and I dreamed of living in a small town. When Dan and I got married, we relocated to Colorado and moved to a town of 5,000 that housed a Walmart. And the only place to buy clothes in town was Walmart, Home Goods, and it was because they had put pretty much everyone else out of business. There was no job opportunity for me unless I wanted to be a greeter at minimum wage, and so we decided to move here for a better job opportunity. Let's see. Four years ago, we moved here with no jobs but hope, and my husband and I were food, soon on food stamps. After relocating to Oregon, we struggled to pay our apartment rent in Beaverton, living off a meager minimum wage job. Only, it was the only jobs we could find, both of us with college degrees and my husband having a master's degree. Fast forward four years later, my husband works as an associate director at George Fox University, and we co-own Blue Plume Art Studio here in Sherwood, teaching others to dream big and follow their creativity within. Recently, I had the privilege of traveling to South Africa to teach art to AIDS orphans for two months and share the same hope and empowerment that I now shall share with the town of Sherwood and many of your children. The only difference is, these children live in shacks. Some of them have no shoes, and they are lucky to get two meals a day. In March of this year, their township burned down, leaving 4,500 of them homeless, one of them being one of my favorite students, Poomlani. He was an art student of mine, and I have remained in close contact with him. He's 23 years old, and he takes care of his little brother on his own. They lost everything, their house, their beds, cell phones, computer, and six years of Poomlani's art he has been creating to sell in hopes of making enough to feed him and his brother and bring hope to their little town of Kayamadi, which means ironically sweet home. As a small business owner in Sherwood, I knew that our town can make a difference because we believe and we understand what the individual is worth. I may not have a million dollars to fix Africa, or Bangladesh, or wherever else, any other place in the world, places that I feel like Walmart disadvantages in the name of cheaper goods that the consumerist America buys into. But I do have heart, and I can paint. I am proud to say that this town, this last weekend, banded together, and we raised over $5,000 for Poomlani and 22 other sponsored orphan children. As a Sherwood resident, I've bought 18 of my paintings. By believing in local businesses, we can provide that hope and create heart and have a town that we are proud to live in, a town that proudly believes in living wage, not only here but also across the globe. Like I said, I may not have a million dollars, but I can paint, and that might just be enough to change the world.[895.36][895.36](APPLAUSE)
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Myrtah Meyer.
Myrtah Meyer.
That's all right.
I apologize.
That's all right. I live at 24002 Southwest Middleton. Profession, I'm a resident of Sherwood and have been a resident of Sherwood for a very long time. Professionally, I am a principal real estate broker in the state of Oregon. I've been a commercial real estate professional for nearly 15 years. In my career, I have managed millions of square feet of multi-use properties in Oregon, Washington, and in California. In my business, we work to foster long-term relationships with owners and developers and their prospective tenants. In addition to that, we work within communities to provide and foster positive relationships. When we review prospective tenants for owners or developers, as a representative of my property owner, my recommendations to them are based not only on financial matters, but also on implications of both material and perceived impacts of new tenants. While I have a multitude of concerns about Walmart coming to Sherwood, it is very well documented that Walmart will deter other businesses from coming to Sherwood. It is well documented that their business model will drive out existing small businesses. In your earlier meeting, in your planning session, there was some discussion of reviewing SDCs. And given that vacancy is very likely to rise in our community with Walmart's opening, the city council really needs to think long and hard about incentivizing small business owners to come into our town. And so a lengthy discussion of SDCs and a review of how those, how those fees are applied, if you will, to small businesses really needs to be taken well into consideration. Based on our existing code, I do ask that the council make an emergency decision to ordain the proposed ordinances as requested by your citizens of Sherwood and as presented by Jennifer Harris. In closing, I ask that you review the economic goals for Sherwood as were reviewed several years ago. We have a very clear plan for the city of Sherwood. We have very clear goals. Those objectives are not currently being met, and we need for you to listen to your constituents and make decisions on our behalf that do benefit this community. I also ask that you take those goals of the Economic Development Plan for Sherwood and review those goals and align them with your council mission statement with a focus on partnership and community pride. Again, I really want you to consider very strongly ordaining these emerg, these ordinances on an emergency basis as allowable to you under our existing code. Thank you.[1116.83][1116.83](APPLAUSE)
Thank you. Richard Remantaria?
He's gone.
Okay. Brian Larson?
Hello and thank you. Brian Larson, 22813 Southwest Saunders Drive.
Welcome.
First off, I don't have an issue with somebody owning property and choosing to sell property, either because it's family property, it's an investment. Many of us here, I'm sure, have bought and sold homes, and hopefully we've made some money on those when we've sold them. This is a capitalistic society. It's part of the American dream. I get all that. I don't have an issue with that. The issue I have is what took place ever since that point, and my issue is not with, with Mr. Langer as the property seller, but with Mr. Langer as the council member and, and the city council in general, at least those that were here when this process started, and also the, the city planning department. The same thing happened in Hillsborough, and they worked together in that case and got Walmart thrown out, basically. Didn't allow it in. They were able to work together and see that that happened, and they knew that they were representing their city when that took place, the thoughts and wishes and best interests of their city. I think most people's frustration is that we feel like we haven't seen that here. I keep hearing, you know, that apparently this was posted back in, you know, two years ago, a year ago. It was posted at the Albertsons. It was posted at the Safeway, both of which may not be here much longer. But that seems to me to be the minimum. If we knew, based on the, the square footage of this plan that was proposed, who the players were going to be, and I think most of us know that, that a big box of any kind is not one that's favored here, Walmart would be the worst choice among those. Why were we not more proactive? Could we not have, or, and I realize the rules for, for Sherwood City Council may be a little bit different than Hillsborough from your, your FAQs here, but could the planning council not, planning commission not work with the city council and, and give, and sent back a revised version of that before approval? Could we not have limited the square footage on the, on the anchor tenant of that store, which would have removed the big-box stores from the, from the conversation? This is maybe water under the bridge at this point, but it goes to my point that we feel like we have not been represented in this process. We need, we need signs from city council and, and the planning commission that they want to work with the Sherwood residents and work for the Sherwood residents. Those are opportunities that have been missed. And what I've not seen since the meeting from two weeks ago is city council or the planning commission coming to us with ideas. I'm glad you're giving us a chance to speak. That's great. But if truly the council and planning commission are there to represent us, the, the city of Sherwood, and yourselves at the same time, I would like to see something that's a little more forthcoming, a little more proactive. Basically, the attitude of what can we do now that we're at this point? What are our options now? There's been talk of ordinances which have worked elsewhere. I'm in favor of those. Portland has put some, some wage restrictions in place, absolutely. If nothing else, make the best out of a, of a bad situation. Saying this isn't going to pact business in Sherwood is ridiculous. There's 20 other tenants that are going to go right in next to this Walmart, and those are going to be the coffee shops, the donut shops, the hairdressers, and this, the things that we have in, in Old Town, which you guys have done such a great job of revitalizing, making it something we can be proud of. That is very much in jeopardy at this point. Albertsons, Target, again, bigger box stores, but, but those that have, that have fit well within the community. Every study out there shows that the negative impacts of a Walmart, what happens when, when Target goes away or Albertsons goes away? What kind of tenant are you going to be able to get into that space then? A Goodwill store? Something that's, you're limited options. So my point is, in wrapping this up, what else can you do to work with us and, and give us ideas on things that we can do and things that have worked elsewhere to make the best of the situation as it is now? Thanks very much.
Thank you.[1403.63][1403.63](APPLAUSE) Elizabeth Farnham?
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Elizabeth Farnham. I'm at 16933 Southwest Cobblestone Drive. And I jotted down a couple of things. I hope I can read my writing. I, first of all, have to agree that unfounded attacks are unnecessary, nor are they productive. If we are trying to work on, as a, as a community, it does nothing. I, I asked this the last time, and I ask it again, why, if, if the town goals and the town, in our, our community, and I am reading this from the website, says that all, all the growth of Sherwood has not squelched the small-town atmosphere of the historical town. So "small town" is mentioned once, "to attract people," to describe our community, and then at the very bottom, as we're describing it, it says, "The city is located on Highway 99 between Tigard and Newburgh, an important transportation triangle in South Washington County. The location also makes it ideal for professionals who commute to work in Portland and return to live in the quiet of the Sherwood community." And so I ask, why, why if that's the goal that we're striving for, and that's why so many people decided to live here and to move here, did we need to even zone for a store that large? So that's my first question. My sec, my second comment is, as Myrtah was saying, instead of attacking, we need to be productive. And I urge you, city council, to consider the suggested ordinances that have been presented before you tonight. And I, I urge you to work with your fellow citizens in, in looking at ways that we can deter this organization from, from opening, and respect the wishes of the majority that have, have spoken. Thank you.
Thank you.[1558.53][1558.53](APPLAUSE) Beth Cook? Given the time, I have three, and I think that that, these three will be the last three. It's almost 10 o'clock. Is that okay with council? We'll go ahead and finish up with the last three.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, my name is Beth Cook, and I live at 23598 Southwest McLaughlin Court here in Sherwood. I'll keep my comments brief. I feel the need to comment regarding the potential jobs provided by Walmart. I would ask that you seek out employees from Walmart, particularly this store that opened not too long ago in West Lynn. These are not minimum wage jobs that provide full-time employment. It is a well-documented corporate practice of Walmart to keep employees to less than 30 hours a week. At Oregon's minimum wage, this is approximately $14,000 per year. This is not a livable wage. I admire those within our community who have the optimism to believe that this store will be different than any other, that they will not have the same negative impact on our local businesses that stores in other communities have had. Unfortunately, I do not share this optimism. I urge you to act now. I ask that the city council take the actions requested this evening regarding proposed ordinances to maintain our healthy community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening.
Thank you.[1645.28][1645.28](APPLAUSE)
My name is Naomi Belov. I live on 22741 Southwest Lincoln Street. So over the weekend, I went out with two petitions. One was just a basic "no Walmart in Sherwood" petition. And we had a tremendous response. It was really interesting to me because I've never petitioned before or done anything like this. The other petition was for a living wage. It was really amazing to see the immediate response of people who are adamant that they do not want Walmart in their community. So people would say, you know, "Just give me it." They read it over. They want a living wage. And these are people from all different socioeconomic backgrounds, people from various, you know, spec, from all spectrions of this, okay, I'll say conservatives, and very liberal people, everybody in between. It does, it's not a partisan issue whatsoever. What it is, is it's a town pulling together and saying that we have a standard that we want to set here for our community, and that is one that will provide for any, like, small businesses here should adhere to that standard. Any store that comes into our community should as well. And not only is it going to have positive, a positive impact on our lives, on anybody that comes here and chooses to either be employed at Walmart or any other store in town, if you adopt the ordinances that were proposed tonight, but also those positive impacts go out throughout the world. I happen to be very upset about the fire in Bangladesh that killed over 1,000 people when, and I, I'm sure you've heard about it in the news.
Mm-hmm.
But when the roof of the building fell on the people who are making Walmart products. So I mean, it's not just our community that will benefit by setting these ordinances and standards. Hopefully, you know, our country as a whole will start to address this issue because we're importing these very cheap products that are made by people in other countries at great expense, you know, to their families, to their livelihood, and to their quality of life. So by us saying that we want to have this standard as a community, it also has a positive impact across the globe. All right, thank you.
Thank you.[1791.51][1791.51](APPLAUSE) Tamara First? Tamara First.
Hi, my name's Tamara First, and I reside at 16425 Southwest Wildlife Haven here in Sherwood.
Welcome.
We live just a block outside of what I would consider a historic old town. We're nestled back behind Stella Wilson Park, and we moved here three years ago. My husband is volunteer firefighter for Tuauton Valley Fire and Rescue, and he currently holds a full-time position with them as fire inspector. We moved to this community from Aloha. Y'all familiar with that area?
Yeah.
Well, 19 years ago, when we bought our house there, it was completely different than what it is today. We bought our house in a community when I was pregnant with our oldest daughter, with the hopes that they would be able to ride bikes down the street someday. We bought a house on a cul-de-sac. Great community. We found ourselves, as our kids were growing up, after Max came through and after changes came, we were in a position where we were going to let our kids ride their bike down the street, around the corner, outside of our vision as teenagers. We chose Sherwood as our community because we wanted our kids to have the freedom as teens to go to the library, the coffee shop, to go to GameStop, to go to Target. Now our kids are 14, 13, and 19. And when we look at the whole prospect of having Walmart in our community, it's disheartening. It's not the fact that it's just Walmart and what Walmart people look like or how they are. I've shopped at Walmart, but I will tell you, I won't support this one. I'm really disappointed that we didn't have the information ahead of time as to who the actual resident was going to be for that property. It's quoted here by Matt Linger, "This project was in the works for 15 years." Barry Kane, I believe Kane, said that Walmart has been the company for the past year and a half they've been planning to have reside in that location. I'm very disappointed that last November, when information was being given out, Matt Linger said that he didn't have to, he wasn't required to share who the company was that was going to be residing in that space. I think that the reason that this has taken so long and has come so close to development time is because you knew that people would oppose this, and that disappoints me. You also stated that you felt that the community would support this project. I hope you know how much that is so untrue. I love this community. I want this to be a safe place for our kids to be. I want this to be a good economic structure for Sherwood, and I don't want to see our small businesses go under.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is city manager and staff reports. I want to thank everybody who came tonight and everybody who spoke tonight, and we will be working with staff to review the ideas and suggestions that people brought tonight. And then Mayor Middleton gets back from vacation. He's in Ireland, in case anybody wanted to know. He's not sick, and he didn't choose not to come. He'll be back, and we'll have a meeting again in two weeks.
June 4th.
June 4th, yes, 4th of June. So, city manager and staff reports.
Council President Henderson and council. The only item I want to mention before we get to council comments, I've been getting some requests from folks in town about the lighting project at the Ridges Campus and at SMS.
Oh, yeah.
You may recall, earlier this year, we talked about using the anticipated Parks SDC from the apartment complex, which is under construction. We'll actually have some money now to actually enhance our existing athletic fields. That project is moving forward. The money is not going to be here until after July 1st. It may not be till, we can't spend money until we actually have the money. It's in the budget, so we're working hard to try to get that project done before the fall. I think everyone in a perfect world, especially with the fall football and soccer, would like to see those lights up and operating in the fall, and we're working as quickly as we can to make that happen. And I think the community was wondering what the status was, and Councilor Butterfield specifically asked me to comment on that. So, any questions on that at this point? We are going to go back to the Park and Rec Advisory Committee, and as we promised that we would before we go out to bid for that lighting project. So I just wanted to touch on that tonight.
Okay.
That's all we have.
Any update on downtown streets? Mr. Pusmer, maybe?
Project is going well. They were planning on paving the alleys here the last couple of days and got delayed from some rain and some other things, but still ahead of schedule and plan to be ready for Cruz in Sherwood.
Okay. Any, what is the slated opening of Washington Street?
I don't know the exact date. I know that they were, shortly after getting the alleys paved, they planned on opening it back up, so I would guess within the next week or two.
Okay. But certainly, the alleys will be done by Cruzon?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Council announcements.
I don't know if this is an announcement, but I have a couple of things. I've been pretty vigilant about being on the city website and collecting information, and I would just like to formally request that a letter from the city be sent to Graymore Development asking if they could possibly find a different name for the Sherwood Town Center, because we've been working with the Metro grant-funded project, the Sherwood Town Center Plan, for several years, and I can think that that is extraordinarily confusing, and maybe they did not understand. So is that a possible request that we could do? And just, I, you know, I'm just guessing that maybe they can find something, make a little less confusing for citizens.
Councilperson, we've already, staff has already drafted that letter because of our concerns, so having that come from the elected city council would actually help.
How do you all feel about that? Is that okay?
I support it.
Yeah.
So we can take care of that right away.
Okay. And some other information, when we sat down and prepared for tonight's meeting, is Garth still here? From DKS. Garth, thank you for staying. We had some questions that I thought a lot of the people, and a lot of them are still here, would be interested to know about your traffic study. Garth is representing DKS Engineering. Can you have a seat? And I've been gleaning a lot of questions from the community. It may seem like none of us are being very proactive, but we hear you, and we've had two weeks, and we're doing, well, I don't know, how many, I spent about 20 hours this week?
Yeah, pretty much till midnight every night.
So we hear you, we're working on it, within the constraints of understanding, I really need to assure everyone that the law is very important in this, and the code is very important in this. And there's a difference between the Hillsborough project and this project completely because of the way it was set up. But I'm, it may be too late to talk about it because I'm super tired, and I can barely sit anymore, my back's killing me. But Garth, do you, maybe Tom, can you direct some of the questions that we talked about yesterday? Because there was a study done, and you used a very conservative methodology to apply what traffic standards are going to happen in this situation. So maybe you could just give us a brief synopsis. I might actually stand up.
Sure. So I'm Garth Appenides with DKS Associates. We serve as the city's on-call traffic engineer. And so we helped review the traffic studies that were prepared for the site over the last several months. So I believe the question you're referring to is, again, at the time of the application, the specific use was not called out in the application. So we're looking at, in terms of general use and general traffic generation. And so in all the materials we reviewed, the use, the procedure that's done is typically uses will go to, the Institute of Transportation Engineers publishes data from across the country that summarizes trip generation for the expected amount of traffic that will occur with the development. And so the use that was used in the application materials was a general shopping center with some supporting retail pads. We took a look at that. At the time, while we were helping the city review the materials, of course, there was discussion about other potential uses, a lot of theories about what that use could be, and if another type of land use category, trip generation rate would be more applicable to the study. So at the time, we actually requested that the applicants do some sensitivity tests and look at some potential uses. Those included, let's see, I've got in front of me, it included the categories of freestanding discount store and freestanding discount superstore, which are the categories that are typically associated with both Walmart and the Super Walmarts, the Super Walmart being those that include the grocery selection as well. And through that analysis, which we reviewed, it would not include more trips than what we're assumed in the original analysis. So that's something that was taken into consideration.
Could you, Tom, maybe you can help speak to why the traffic can be navigated, because it's not on the existing roads that are there, it's on what's happening with the changes, right? With the expansion of South Linger Parkway?
North.
North, north.
North.
Sorry.
I think what she's asking is, what was, what did they show as improvements in their model, or what did they assume?
Yeah, the assumptions that were made.
Right, right. So, yeah, and I don't have the full list of the conditions of approval here in front of me, but just in general, from what I recall, some of the transportation-related projects that are going to be constructed per those conditions of approval and other agreements include the extension of Langer Farms Parkway from Tuauton Sherwood Road up to Highway 99, right in front of the Home Depot store, the traffic signal at Tuauton Sherwood Road and Langer Farms Parkway. And then I believe there's some kind of fee in lieu of the frontage improvements along Tuauton Sherwood Road. As many know, right now, the Washington County is taking a look at a design project for the cross-section of Tuauton Sherwood Road, which would be near the frontage of that site.
So, Tom, could you, and Julia, maybe you know this, do we have any timeline on that project, on the Washington County project on Tuauton Sherwood?
I didn't actually speak directly with the project manager of the county today, but I did get a message that said that he, that they're still on target for a 2014 construction timeframe.
Okay. And that's a pretty extensive makeover of that section. It's a huge makeover.
Yeah, I believe so. It's widening and possibly reconfiguring entrances and things like that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. One quick note, I've been just taking notes here and there. How large is Target? Is it 135?
25.
125.
It's a 125,000 square foot store, the one we have.
I cannot confirm that, but I believe so.
Something like that, okay. So...
And then the stores attached to it.
Yeah. There's other stores attached to it. Okay. Just, it's, we're taking in all of the information that we're getting? We're, oh, would you, I know you did this for me on the Frequently Asked Questions site, but Hillsborough was a very different situation than this situation, and it allowed for, it started in a very different process. Is that correct?
Yes, that's my understanding. Basically, because of the location of the proposed Walmart in Hillsborough, it was in a station area, that required it to go up to the city council level. That was just part of their code and their process.
And that was a Ranco station, or something like it?
I'm not positive. So, you know, when we hear people say, well, the Hillsborough council voted against it, their process required that. Their process required a recommendation from the planning commission and a decision by council similar to the planned unit development process here at the city of Sherwood. So that's why they viewed it and voted on it. And my understanding in talking with the staff person at Hillsborough, it was voted against, denied, for traffic reasons. And I don't know all the details of why those traffic issues warranted denial, but that was the reason.
So what I heard you say is it was a little different than the PUD, the Planned Unit Development, that we have here, because the planned unit development for this commercial retail space was approved by the Planning Commission in 1995.
And the city council.
And the city council.
Right. So back in 1995, when the planned unit development, it's a different process, but basically Hillsborough's process for developments of that size within a station area required planning commission recommendation and council approval.
Right. But the PUD here had that process, but it happened 13 years ago.
Correct.
Is that my, is my math good? I don't know.
Back in 1995.
Yes.
18 years.
Okay. And, okay, I think that's all my questions, sorry.
Sure.
And, oh, and I just wanted to thank everybody who came out last weekend to the Voices for the Performing Arts Benefit Concert. Money was raised, there will be grants given, scholarships were given. It was really, life is a happy song. It was great. There's parents out there.
Councilor Butterfield?
I have nothing.
Okay. Councilor Clark?
So we've heard a lot of testimony from citizens, and so my question to you is that, I've written down the ordinance ideas here that have been testified for. Do you need direction from us to move forward, to draft ordinances with direction of city attorney, to say, "We have the opportunity to do this or that to help define our communities"? Is that what you need?
It would be preferable to get some sense from the council whether you want us to explore any or all of those ordinances.
Okay.
It would largely be handed off to Mr. Crean and our attorneys to look at the legality and what we can do within our current laws, and to do that in a very expeditious manner, I think that's what the citizens want.
Okay.
But it would help if I got some sense from the council whether you wanted us to go in that direction.
Well, that's what I'm hearing from the citizens, is that to explore the ideas of the ordinances. Yeah?
I just wanted to add something to the petition, because I was helpful in getting the petition signed this past week, and I forgot to give you another three sentences. This is general no Walmart. I'd like to give those, yeah. But also, if you need help in organizing, I got 20 volunteers to do 700 petitions in a day. So you need 180 people to get 100 petitions each. Hold it. It's not just...
City recorder.
Yeah, right there.
I'm sorry, I need to know who this is from. Naomi Belov?
So, and I have friends in Lake Oswego who are saying, "We don't want another Walmart. We just have our neighborhood centered here. We don't need another one." Friends in Shoal, who all here asking me, "Can I go out and petition?" So I'm not going to get people from other towns to petition our town. There are plenty of residents here who represent what we want, and I'll be happy to do that if you need more.
Well, and I'm hearing, I'm hearing the, you can go ahead and sit down if you like. I'm hearing the citizen comment, I'm hearing lots of different comments. My viewpoint on the things that I'm hearing is, we have, we have America. People get to own their land, people get to sell their land. That is the American way. There are people that are not happy about the choice that this landowner made. I think that as a community, I think that it's well within our rights to say, "We want to define by ordinances how we see our community." I don't, however, think, I have to fall on the side of Tim Branazan, who spoke to a similar situation that I experienced. The way that some, not all, I think there's been a lot of great constructive criticism, a lot of wonderful ideas that have come out, but there have been some very non-Sherwood things that have been said to hurt people directly. And that's just not the Sherwood that I know. That's not the Sherwood that held my family up and held Tim Branazan's family up and wants our children safe and wants a wonderful community. And I just want to not criticize people, but critique policy and say, "What are we going to, what are we going to do to embrace each other, to build each other up, to make this community continue to be the great community that we moved here for, and that people lived 150 years here because it's so great?" I'd like to see that. I'd like to see ordinances that support that, because that's the Sherwood that I love. That's the Sherwood that I sit here to serve. And for the record, I'm not a liar. I didn't know what was happening, because it's not my land, and it's not because I was asleep at the wheel, it's because it's not my land. But it is my community, and I do care about this community, and I do want to see us caring about each other and not tearing each other down, and not pointing the finger, but pointing the finger to ourselves and saying, "What can I do? What is it that I can do to make this community even greater?" What is it that I can do to make this community even greater? So that's what I'd like to see staff. We're not going to take any more public comment, I'm afraid, because we're kind of way past. That's what I'd like to see, and I'd like to hear from my other counselors what, how they feel as well.
First of all, I'd like to compliment Council President Henderson for managing this meeting very well. There's a lot of high emotions in this room, and it's not easy for us to know where to draw the line when people are maybe not, not being productive in this meeting. And Counsel Henderson has done a good, Council President Henderson has done a good job. We don't, we want, we want the comments. We, obviously, the state doesn't require us to have citizen comment, but we do. And we don't do it for the one person who comes up in here and rips us once a week or whatever, and we do it for this, for this exact thing. This is why we do it. Because I like to hear what everybody has to say, the people that agree with me and the people that disagree with me. And I don't like to hear this First Amendment stuff, because I'm not seeing it. I'm listening to everything, and I read every single email, every single one, and I listen to everything. And I, I'll stay here till midnight, except for I probably couldn't convince the other counselors to stay here till midnight.
I still gotta make lunches.
But there's, there's no shutting down or nothing. We want to hear it. And I'm so glad to see all these people. And part of it is, is for what, so, thank you, Council President Henderson.
You're welcome.
So part of it is for what we hear from you, and part of it is because I have to believe that people in this room are learning about us and about maybe how the process works. And I think there's a lot fewer people saying, why did, why did you pick Walmart? I mean, I think people are starting to understand, we didn't pick Walmart. It wouldn't have been my first choice. It's just, it's not what we do. And I think you should be lucky that it's not what we do, because governments would be bad at that. And that's my opinion. And so I'm glad that, I'd like to take credit for Safari Sam's or the Ice Arena or Pacific Family Dental, but I can't. We didn't choose them. They just can't. And so, but I, I'm kind of hearing that that's coming out, that people are starting to understand that. Now, as far as Counsel Langer, you know, the first I saw about Walmart was on the light at sign-out in 99. And so I don't, I don't think, it cannot possibly be a big surprise to a lot of people in this town, because it's been the talk. I am a friend of Counsel Langer, and I specifically did not ask him over the last year, because I knew that he is, he is an honorable person, and he was contractually obligated to keep his negotiations private, because I know how these negotiations work. They're all that way, not just Walmart. And so I didn't put him in that position. And I hope other people honored that also, because people just need to understand, that's how it works. As soon as Kohl's needed to announce, they stayed quiet, then they announced, you know? And I'm sure Target was the same way. And, and that's just how it works. And I, I hope people are starting to understand that, you know? This process, I think, has gone as well as it can. It's different from Hillsborough, and it's also different from, people compare us to Woodburn. Well, I think that's a terrible comparison. First of all, I've seen the plans, and this is not anything like what I see in Woodburn, nothing like that. And this town is nothing like Woodburn either. So to say that, well, we don't want that, well, I don't want what Woodburn's got here either, but I don't think that's what's going to happen. I go over to Wilsonville, and I see what they've got, and that's a big box store. And I appreciate the comments, that any big box store is, it really is the same thing. It shouldn't be the name on, you know, on the door. But I go over there, and I'm jealous of them. That's a great thing they've got over there with Fred Meyer and everything around it. In fact, we go over there to get a restaurant. That is what I want for us. I'm excited about this project, because it's going to serve us, this town, in ways that we're not serving. And I'm, I'm not buying that it's going to shut down small businesses, because I don't think we have small businesses in this town that are geographically isolated, like in some provincial rural towns, where, yes, if you took it down, like, I don't know, Joseph or something like that, and you dropped a Walmart, and then, well, you know, they're isolated and things happen. But this is not that town. And so to draw comparisons, I think we should, we should really think closely about the comparisons we make, you know? We talk about Hillsborough. Well, where did the Walmart go? Cornelius. What did that do? I don't think it did Hillsborough any good. And to, to do what they did, which we can't do, but a lot of people in this town are going to WinCo. A lot of the people in this town are driving to Woodburn. And a lot of people in this town are driving to Cornelius. And that tells me we're not serving the people in this town. And many people like me go to Walmart when that is what we want. And when it's not what we want, we don't go to Walmart. We go someplace else. And, but we're not serving the people in this town well. And I think that this project is going to do that. It's going to serve the people in this town who are on, on, serving families on a tight budget, are on a fixed income because they're retired or whatever, for whatever reason, I'd like to serve the people in this town that want that service. And if they don't, they should go to another place in this town or someplace else. It's not being served well in this town. I'm looking forward to the other businesses that are going to come in. I want business vitality. We talk so much about what's it take to bring business into this town. We talk about the impediments to business. We see in here that the fees, and the SDCs on it, we talk about that, and, boy, what can we do that other people do? We want more businesses in this town. Well, this is what it looks like. It's the successful people who come in and do good things. It's not gonna, it's not, I just, I'm just not buying this stuff about how it's gonna, it's gonna turn our town into a wasteland. It's not going to happen. And I think that is the national smear campaign that's mixing into this discussion, is done, it's being promoted by the, by the labor unions. And I think we got people in town, they got an axe to grind with Langer family, and I think, I think that we all need to just slow down. But what makes me the most sad about this is that it has pitted us against one another. We do this because we love this town. We're not paid up here. In fact, I already turned my expenses in to Sylvia, I could do that. But we do this because we love the town. That's why we're here, like you do. I've lived here for 20 years. And, and I just, I want good things to happen in this town, just like you all do. But we're forced to deal in reality and in facts. We can't just make believe up here. We have to look at the actual situation and make decisions. And I, and it's just, it saddens me to see, I don't care what you say about me, but saddens me to see the other counselors being attacked like this. We want good things to happen, I assure you all. And I believe this is a very good thing. It's going to serve this town in ways that we're not being served. And, and the traffic improvements that are going to come with it are things I'm dying for. I would love to drive straight to Home Depot. I can't yet. I'm going to be able to. And I'm looking forward to it. Let's not allow people who have an axe to grind to pit us against one another. Let's work together with ordinances or whatever else and be a happy town of people who love this town. I want to do that, you want to do that, we all want the same thing. That's what I want. Thank you.
Counsel Langer?
I just want to remind the council that we still have a URA work session after this.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm long with it.
So, Counsel Langer, please.
Counsel President, the URA, you do not have to do that tonight. So if you want to wrap this up, you can do the URA.
Okay, we'll postpone that to another, it was a work session, not, less than...
So, Tom, what were...
We were talking about the future of Serbeck.
Oh, let's do that another night. So, but before you let Counsel Langer, I'm sorry, I don't think Joe got his question answered about what we want. But let Langer, let Counsel Langer go, but don't forget, we got to answer the question.
I'm coming back to that.
First, I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. The PUD was zoned in 1995. In 2007, the city reconfirmed this zoning. I was not on council during either vote. Since 2007, there's been a huge sign on Twalton Sherwood Road notifying the public of the pending project. At some point, a line must be drawn between my private life and my role as a city counselor. Specific details regarding our latest retail project happened to fall on the personal side of that line. I invite you to look at the city records to see there were no ethical or legal lines that were crossed. Thank you.
Counsel Butterfield?
I just want to say quickly that I've known Matt for a long time. I've been here for 20 years. I stand by him and his conviction. He's an honest man. I depend on him, he depends on me, as we in the community should depend on each other. So, that being said, we're all taking this information seriously. I get phone calls, just like everybody else. We know it's an issue, and, and we're working to try to come to some resolution.
Okay, back to Counsel Folsom's comment. So, staff, what I think, the, what we've heard from the public and from the council, what we, I don't know, I was taking notes, I know Julia was taking notes. What we want to, to do is ask staff to consider ordinances. There were a number of them, I don't remember them all. Whether or not, you know, do some research, please, whether or not that's researching other communities, speaking with legal, finding out whether or not it's, you're able to. I know there was a mention of forbidding the sale of firearms. I think that's sanctioned by state law, and that is not something we can, we cannot supersede state law by forbidding the sale of firearms. But that's the only one I know off the top of my head. But can we please ask staff to do research, look into what other communities have done, livability issues, wage issues? I don't have all my notes in front of me. And then, obviously, we would come back and review that list, and then make a decision how we want to move forward, once we have the knowledge of, of how the ordinance can be, can be drafted, how it can be applied, whether or not it can be an emergency ordinance or not, and whether or not, whatever, noticing, you know, we'd have to go through to potentially draft it. Which is what we do in any, whenever we have a new topic, we ask staff to do research, we have a work session. We often do our own research. Counsel Butterfield mentioned that we rely on each other. We meet, obviously, not in a quorum, but periodically to talk about issues that we are concerned about in our community, and then we work together to try to bring those issues to council. And that, we do that all the time. This is Counsel Langer's, or Counsel Grant's 11th year on the council, this is my ninth year on the council, this is Counsel Folsom's 5th year on the council, and we bring issues to staff all the time about livability, concerns about traffic. There was a resident here tonight who added, who added ADA accessibility issue, and she didn't get her chance tonight, because I think she either, she got tired, or, you know, she just couldn't wait so long. So, is that enough direction?
That's enough.
Okay. I know Sylvia has notes.
And I think, I want to thank the folks that put together the sample ordinances and the ideas, because they've been very clear. I think we'll just work on them, you know, individually, one at a time, and work through them, and try to do it as quickly as possible to bring it back to you, so you can make some decisions to move forward. And I think that's one thing that everyone can agree on. At least, that's what I heard, so.
So some citizens I know, when they, when they came up to the dais, had electronic versions. So if you can forward those to staff, you know, that would be extremely helpful, it would speed up the process of them doing research versus potentially waiting for minutes to be transcribed. So if you can send those to Sylvia or Joe or Julia, that would be helpful. Any other announcements? I just want to briefly, do you have another announcement?
I just want, no, I promise I'll be quick. I just have to say, when you're talking about the process, you are all still here. And I think that this is a really good thing for our community, because that's how I ended up sitting on city council.
Me too.
And I'm thinking, one of the council goals was to have a citizen group formed together and look at the, the charter revisions, right? This is a group. So I just am really proud for a minute, you know? You're learning the process.
You all just got put on a committee.
What's your name? That's how, that's how we all got started.
That's exactly right.
So, the one thing I just want, I just want to briefly comment, and we'll probably have a work session on this, but I had the privilege and the honor of representing our community in Washington DC last week with Tom Pestmer, and actually, my husband came too. He took time off from work, and we went to Capitol Hill, and we met in a whirlwind, two and a half days, with a number of agencies, the Economic Development Administration, the US Department of Rural Development, we're still considered a rural community. We met with the National Endowment for the Arts regarding our new, our future community, our cultural arts center. We met with the EPA, everybody's familiar with the Tannery site, and with some of the other EPA issues in town. We also met with the Department of Justice for a COPS grant, which, that deadline has gratefully been extended until the first part of June. And then we met with staff members from Senator Merkley's office, Congresswoman, or Senator Wyden's office, and we had 40 minutes with Congresswoman Bonamici, which is unheard of, that you would get 40 minutes with a congressional member of our, who represents our district, whether you agree with, you know, her party representation or not. She was gracious. She had just been to this community three weeks before, and we talked about all what is wonderful about Sherwood. She was extremely impressed with what she saw. She's very interested in coming back. She thinks what we have here is very special. That is, of course, preaching to the choir. But we learned so much, and the agencies that we went to speak to are just citizens like me and you. They're just people who have jobs, they just happen to live in Washington DC, which is crazy, and I can't explain it anything other than like an anthill when we went to Capitol Hill. And it was a privilege to go, I learned so much, I think Tom would agree. Everybody was extremely helpful. They care about our community, even though they're on the other side of, of our, you know, on the other side of our country. And they were all extremely helpful. And I think that it's, it was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and I enjoyed so much. And hope that we, and in, in return, we hope that we'll be able to tap potentially some federal money, which is our money, of course, to do things in Sherwood that help us pay off debt early, that help us do things in the community center, that help us get up to get brownfield areas of town that are, you know, on EPA lists cleaned up. And potentially grants for facilities in our community that will need improvements that we may or may not have capital money for. So, I think we'd like to bring back our lobbyist group, Joel Rubin, who walked us through that, and that will be an open work session. Anybody's invited to come to that and talk about, you know, what we try to, the relationships that we try to maintain with our federal, you know, agencies and offices, so. So I appreciate, I thank the city for, for, yeah, making all the arrangements, Sylvia, and supporting me while I was there. And trust me, we do not live in Washington DC. And I also spent some time in Massachusetts, and we do not live in Massachusetts either. So, with that, we're adjourned, and good night. Oh, yes.